All right, good evening. And we're -- Lisa, can I take attendance, please?
Yep. Anthony Amato.
Here.
Alan Brown. John.
Here.
Gregory Kava. Sorry, I meant Greg. Didn't mean to be so formal. Michelle.
Yeah.
Jim.
Yeah.
Stephanie. I'm here. Mike. Julie.
Here.
Jen. Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a quorum. So we can continue. So moving on to item number two on the agenda. Public comments from the public. We have a lot of public, but nobody wants to speak, which is just okay. Excuse me? When we get there. Yeah. Are you talking about the vote? Potential vote? Yeah, we could save that. I'll mention it in the board's chair. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, which is a special recognition of the Board of Education. Is there?
Michelle.
I know, Michelle. Michelle Q., please.
Do I need to do anything with the microphone?
I don't think so. I think it's -- is it on? Yeah, we're good. We're getting a thumbs up.
Excellent.
Everything is good. And thank you so much for coming.
Yeah. Good evening, Superintendent Bennett, Chairman Amato, and board members. I'm Michelle Embry-Cu. I am the board chair in Newtown, and I'm also a Cabe Area Director, or the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. And in my home district of Newtown, it's budget season. It's spring, but budget season seems to take over right now. And we often get the observation that school is not like it used to be. And as boards of education, we try to explain the value of being -- of the school being different than how it used to be, and how the schools serve our students. And Cabe likes to recognize boards of ed and districts that are able to do that communication well. So I'm pleased to be able to present to you the Cabe Bonnie B. Carney Award of Excellence for Educational Communications for two of your districts endeavors. So entries had to meet specific criteria. First, they had -- there had to be a clarity of message and consistency. And second, the presentation was evaluated for readability, graphics, presentation, design, and value of the expenditure. So I'm pleased to present the award in excellence for educational communication for the Spring 2018 District Newsletter and the Class of 2017 Report District Newsletter. So congratulations, and I will show you your award. Surprise.
You have two?
You have two. So I will.
Colin, where's your one?
Are you doing pictures?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, I'll put down the.
Enjoy it.
Do you want?
All right, and three, two, one. Awesome, thank you so much.
There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, now we have another presentation. Physics first. Mr. Hermans and his students, please, sir.
I'd like to start by thanking the school board and also Ms. DeBrito for having us here this evening. It's not often that you get a chance to present what you're doing in a science class to the community, and we're very happy to be here. I have with me Jessica Kissling and Katie Orletzky to walk you through the process that they followed in answering a particular question. And also Giacomo Colangelo and Evan Warner, who are going to show you their work with the engineering design cycle and building a working model of a windmill. First, we're going to watch a video that Colin made of a class a few weeks ago, and I think really gives you the sense of the feeling of one of our physics classes and the way in which the students work together to develop a question and to answer it. Freeza Hermans, I teach physics at Chapag School. There's a few different kinds of things that we do frequently, and it's all around the idea of learning science by doing science. So I want to have the students talking to each other about their results. I want the students to be designing experiments. I want the students to be collecting the data, interpreting the data, and deciding what it means. I'm there to help them. I'm there to pull their ideas together. I'm there to articulate what they're saying. But I want to be there to assist them in developing their scientific thinking, not to do the scientific thinking for them. This last lab that we did, I had spent a fair amount of time showing them techniques because it was new equipment, it was new software. But my showing them wasn't, here's how you do the lab. It was, here's how's the equipment work. Now you guys go do the lab. Then the collection of data. Usually, a graph will come out of the data, a graph that's intended to illustrate the relationship that students are looking for, to see whether there is a relationship of interest. And then the interpretation of the graph will wind up with an equation, and the equation then winds up being the relationship that we were looking for in the first place. So that was an experiment to look at Newton's second law, although I didn't call it that until well after the experiment was completely finished. We were looking at factors that affect acceleration. The students decided in watching a fan cart, which is a low-friction cart that rolls on a track that has a fan attached to it, and when you turn on the fan, the cart changes its velocity as it moves down the track. And so that allows them to study the factors that would affect the acceleration of the cart. And they decide that it's the force of the fan and it's the mass of the cart. And so that winds up with the three variables that we're testing. And we discussed a way that we would be able to control for one of the variables while we tested the other variable. These carts have sensors built into them, so it allowed them to measure the acceleration on the cart as well as measure the force. And they had to write that data down. So it was fairly complex in terms of they needed to measure the velocity of the cart and then get the slope of the velocity-time graph to get the acceleration. And they also had to measure the force by running the cart up against the end of the track. And so those were the techniques that they used to get their measurements of acceleration and force. But then the idea was to graph force versus the acceleration to see what the relationship between those two things were. So once they got their data for force and acceleration, they then constructed a graph using a different computer program. There's a lot of technology in this lab. They used graphical analysis for that. What they got out of it, provided they had worked carefully, they get a straight line through the origin. And then each group wound up sketching their graph on a whiteboard and writing the equation that goes along with that. There was an opportunity for students to ask each other questions. There was an opportunity for me to ask them questions, to clarify. And my questions are always along the lines of trying to get the students to maybe consider what they've represented is consistent with what they understand and with good mathematical practices, and if it's consistent with what they observed. I very rarely will just tell students, this is what you should have gotten. I try to avoid ever doing that. I want the students, perhaps from a question of mine, to consider whether their logic is internally consistent, and then if there's a change that needs to be made, I want them to make the change based on, oh, yeah, that's not going to work because that's not consistent. In this group, they really were talking to each other a lot. And as they were talking, they were just fixing the inconsistencies without me even being there, which to me is the ideal. If I'm not part of the conversation and it's students talking to students, I think that's where the greatest learning is happening. The entire world of science teaching is moving in this direction. It's a big change. From being an idea where the teacher tells the students and shows the students how to do it, and the students do it, and approach the teacher's performance on it, is being replaced by one where the students are thinking as scientists based on evidence that they collect. It's a big change in the world of science teaching. It's an exciting change to be part of. And having done this now for seven years, I wouldn't ever want to go back doing it any other way. Because you're learning how the students think, you're watching them think, and being there to help guide their thought process, which is, there's just nothing I'd rather do.
So Katie and Jessica, do you want to tell us about your experiment?
Hi, my name is Jessica Kissling. And my name is Katie Orletzky. And we have a presentation about one of the labs we did in a couple -- actually, it was like a week ago in physics.
One more slide.
And the name of this was the collision cart lab. And we have a demonstration here, but we'll show it to you after. So our main topic question that we were trying to answer from this lab was, how does the momentum of two carts change in a collision? So while when you first ask yourself our hypothesis as to what may come out of this experiment, you may first think that, well, obviously, the cart with the larger mass will have a higher momentum than the cart with the lower mass. Well, what we ended up finding is that is not the case, so. All right, if you want to do your experiment. Katie will do the experiment of colliding the two carts together while this is also a graph that we found in measuring the two carts, because the grass have -- the carts have a sensor on them that you can figure out how much momentum and velocity they have. And as you can see, the blue cart, which is the one on the left, had basically the same amount of change in momentum as the cart on the right, except they were in opposite directions. So we came to the conclusion that if carts collide together, then they will have equal, yet opposite, changes in momentum. And this is the pieces of data that we found. For cart one, I'm not going to read to you all of the points, but for cart one for track one, the change in momentum was negative .48249 meters per second, while for cart two, it was positive .48222, which, as you can see, it's pretty close to being the same. And this is the case again for track two and three. The changes in momentum are both pretty much similar, except they're opposite in signs. So this is just highlighting two of the points. As you can see, the reason why the comparison between the two numbers may be a little bit different is because of variations within friction and different factors like that. So our data does not come out to be perfect, but it's still very relatively close. But then one pattern that we highlighted the most is the fact that one is negative and one is positive. And that's what we found from this experiment, is that even though that, yes, the two carts have different masses, one had -- the red cart has a red weight on it, they still have a roughly around the same momentum after the collision, just opposite. And in order to find this, we found the final velocity and the initial velocity, and we subtracted the initial velocity from the final velocity and multiplied it by the mass of the actual cart itself. And this is how we got the change of momentum. Thank you.
So one of the things I want to share with you all is the process in class where after a student group finishes the presentation, there's opportunities for other students to ask questions. And we pretty much always have a question, and so I think. Yeah? Oh, yeah. Go back to the microphone.
So I wanted to -- we also wanted to share with you that in class, after a student group presents, that there's a time for questions from -- and usually, there's one group that knows that they're on the spot for a question, which is these two gentlemen. It's also open to anyone else, which would include anyone else here who has a question for them on this. You should feel free, in the spirit of open inquiry, to join in the questioning. So let's take it away.
Somebody has to ask a question. Okay, I came in a little bit late, but you may have covered this, but what is the methodology behind having your positive and negative forces not be specific to the carts, but to be specific to one direction? In other words, what you're seeing is a change in momentum in both of them, it would be equal, yet one's assigned minus and one's assigned positive value. What's the methodology that has you, as opposed to having a relative change in momentum for each of them? There's obviously, it's not relative, it's specific to one direction. Can you just fill me in on that?
Well, the two carts, they're moving in different directions as they're coming off of each other, but the same momentum is being dispersed as the change in momentum is occurring. So the negative and positive is the different directions that they're moving in. So the forces between the two are equal, just moving in different directions.
So that's a way to signal that we're talking about different directions, then, the negative and the positive?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I just wanted to ask the question about, were the forces the same? Like, would the different forces affect the momentum at all?
So when the two carts collide, the total amount of forces between them are equal. That's why they have the same change in momentum. But even though that one may be applying more force onto the other, does that make sense? Yeah, if, say, because the cart with more mass obviously is going to have a greater force on the other cart. So if there's more force colliding with another cart than that meet -- then, well, we came to the conclusion on our presentation was that no matter the force or like weight of a cart, then it won't change how much change in momentum is occurring between the two carts. They're always going to have an equal and opposite change of momentum. Thank you.
I'm Giacomo Colangelo.
And I'm Evan Warner.
And we decided that we would choose one of our labs about engineering a windmill and the processes we took to get through it. So let's go.
So the experiment overview. So the objective for this experiment was to create a windmill out of scrap materials and how -- and it could lift paperclips, and to perfect the design through trial and error, which we call the engineering process.
So we had a few ideas in the beginning on what we were going to do. And as you can see, or you probably can see, that they were pretty rough ideas of what the final product is going to be, because we just had these materials lying around. We didn't know exactly what we were going to do yet, but that's when we began our process.
So trial and error. In the engineering process, you have to create prototypes, and these prototypes are meant to fail. And so because they fail, you can learn what happened wrong, and you can fix it. So for our windmills, the base was too light and it blew away. The fan didn't have enough support, so it toppled the whole entire base over, and the string got caught while spooling, and it would stop the windmill from spinning.
So after that, after checking out what went wrong, we decided that we needed to fix those problems in order to have a successful windmill. So to fix that, we decided to add washers to the base. Here, do you want to get the windmill so we can check it out?
There's a washer in here that we glued in, so it would hold it down.
And we added some support to the fan. So what my group decided was to create sort of like a saddle for the axle. And what happened when the blade blew up, it was coming out. So we decided to sort of have some sort of barriers to hold the axle in. And we also had sort of issues with the string tangling, so there's a thin layer of hot glue that we put around this cork, so that when it wound up all the way, it didn't end up going over, tangling in any sort of way.
And the final design. After we found all these problems and created the final design, we wrote it down, and we fixed minor problems like, well, they're like.
Yeah, everything that went wrong in the experiment. And so after everything sort of came to its conclusion, we reflect on what we've done, and we reflect on all the changes we've made and adaptations to, yeah, adaptations to the conflicts. And so we wanted to talk about the energy transfer as well. That was another thing, from like work being added or sort of forces being acted upon. So we created a whiteboard like we would in class to sort of show you guys what went on. And so we can talk a little bit about this. This is sort of the format that we chose for creating an energy bar chart. So in the beginning, there's really no energy being acted upon, because, you know, there's just sort of work. That's what this is, that's what this arrow is. We added three work, which is the wind power, and that's what you can see on the final graph over there, if that makes any sense. Well, yeah, the work is just the wind blowing on, because it's not directly being added to a force at all. And then we just write everything down in our science and engineering notebook as a reflection, and that's what you saw on the last slide. Anything you want to add?
No.
Any questions, anybody?
Can you blow on it so we can see?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Here, we got the fan. Here, got that. We haven't used this in a while, so it'll start. Come on, just do it for me. No, okay. Don't do this now. Come on. No! I promise it works. Come on.
Put it down on the table.
Yeah. Maybe move it back a little bit, there might be too much. There we go. That's what it was. There you go!
I have a question. I'm confused about bar charts, because I just, I really kind of don't get how they work. So maybe walk me through what those letters mean. Because I see, like, I see the diagram, it says the amount of energy, but like, what's the letter?
So the letters are the types of energy. So W stands for work. And that would be like an outside force putting in on it. There are other ones, like electricity, and.
So how is a system storing the energy at the end, after you run the windmill? Like, that's work.
As internal energy? Is that what you mean?
How does it, like, once it finished, like, winding up, how is the energy stored?
Oh, that's a good question.
It's kind of confusing, isn't it?
I would say in gravity, because after, here, after this is lifted, the problem, the problem at first was that we need to lift these, and the gravity was holding it down. So once it spun off, after all that happens, there is the gravity that's left. You see that if we just let it go, then the gravity will pull this back down. So it would be gravity.
So how would you, on your representation, how would you show that the energy restored is gravity at the end?
Maybe we should have had some gravity at the beginning to show that, like, the earth is in the system. I guess we probably could have included gravity.
But where is the gravitational energy the highest?
When it's at its highest.
At the end. So how can your representation show that the gravitational energy is highest at the end?
Well, we could show that.
We could add more boxes.
Yeah.
Right there.
Because it sort of climbed up. And this is all relative, too, because.
But the work that was done, how is that stored? How is that energy that went in by work, how is it stored by the system?
Now it's.
Through.
Gravity? So how would you use your representation to show that there's energy stored as gravitational energy at the end?
You mean like we should have included the gravitational side of the bar chart as well?
How is it stored at the end?
How is it stored at the end? I haven't done this in a while. Let's think. Yeah, but this is good, because this is what we do in class. It helps you question yourself.
So this is the point at which somebody else might pipe up and say.
Fuss out!
Well, it looks like there's two forces acting upon the load, and one is gravity and one is wind. Does that make any sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you want your final storage to show gravity, gravitational energy. Where's the final storage part of your energy bar chart?
Hmm. It's not really there.
At the end.
Yeah, at the end.
It is.
Well, it's not super.
Where's the end?
There?
There. So that energy is stored as what?
Well, no, the work is stored as the gravitational.
It's right.
So that's mislabeled, is it?
Well, tell me why you think it might be mislabeled.
Well, because, I mean, we added work, but I guess work isn't itself an energy, like, that can be stored. So when it's all wound up, then I guess it turns into gravitational once it reaches its highest point.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess that would be relative to the situation.
Okay. So how would you, what would you change about it?
I would probably change the W to a G for gravitational.
Yeah.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
See, normally, that happens in class and not in front of the school board. So can you give them another hand?
So do we have the clicker? Is it clicker? Oh, it's right here, good. So I just wanted to end, first of all, by saying thank you to the students who came here today. We really so much appreciate you sharing with us what the flavor of our class is. But I wanted to close by looking at the seven science and engineering practices and kind of use them as a checklist for, you know, asking questions and defining problems. You've seen what the flavor of that is in physics, and developing and using models, you know, the bar chart is a model, using it, the diagrams for the windmill. Certainly, planning and carrying out investigations, I think that you've seen that, analyzing and interpreting data, using mathematics and computational thinking. Certainly, Katie and Jessica gave us quite a bit of that, and constructing explanations and designing solutions. And both groups did a great job in engaging in argument from evidence. So this is really what we mean by the NGSS, Science and Engineering Practices. And I wanted to say these students really did a great job of showing that to you today. I am going to have the opportunity this summer to go to a computational modeling workshop, which is going to be not only working with making mathematical models, but then also using computer programming to make mathematical models, then, and having not just graphs and calculations as the outcome, but also computer programs that can generate results. So that's something I'm very excited about doing, and I think it'll be a chance to take the work that we're doing here, possibly in a new direction, so maybe a couple of years from now, I can tell you about that. But thank you very much for having us here today.
You have, hang on for a second, we have a question. Freeza, we have a question.
I was just wondering, since this is, this was our first foray into physics in ninth grade, and we were all kind of wondering how that was going to work with the math and everything. How have you found that transition to physics for ninth graders?
Well, I think it's certainly challenging for the students, but it's something that they're doing. I think you can see from the tenor of the discussion that you watched, that when the students have a chance to be applying some of the graphing skills, it gives them a wider context for their using, for what they're using the skills for. I have not really emphasized the use of algebra to solve physics problems where the answer is a number. We do a little bit of that. That often is the entire emphasis of a physics course. Math is used much more as interpreting data, analyzing data, interpreting a graph, developing an equation, developing a model. And so really-- And so, really, the math is used much more on the creative side of things to generate a new relationship as much as it is to find an answer. I think that changes the way that the math feels in the class. It's less about working through a series of equations that have to be rearranged in just one way. And it leaves everything more wide open to a variety of interpretations and a variety of representations. And so, I think that that's helpful, I think, in terms of keeping it a more sort of open inquiry instead of kind of narrowly focused. I think there, it's very valuable to have the math, these important math skills, be developed. And I think it's important, from my point of view, in ninth grade, to be developing those skills rather than just expecting them. And that's something that I expect I'll be able to tell you more about within a year or two. But certainly, it's a process of me learning where the students are, learning what their, what their, what their needs are in terms of moving their math forward, and then making sure that it's done in a way that is relevant to them and is within the context of something that is meaningful to them.
Thanks.
Great. Anyone else? Greg. Yeah, I'd like to ask the students what...
Sure. Go ahead.
What do you like about physics?
Me?
No, no, I'm asking the students. I don't want to hear it from you, Freezer. Sit down. What do you guys like about physics? What's enjoyable for you about it?
Well, one thing that I personally really like about physics is the fact that all through elementary school and middle school, you're always, the teachers will always hand you a procedure and they just tell you, follow it, get your data. And it's straightforward like that. This class, I feel like, has just really challenged us to kind of try to figure stuff out on our own for once, which is, I feel like, a really good intro into the rest of high school for us because we're having to, Mr. Hermans will give us, like, our question, like, for hours, like, how can we make a windmill that properly functions? Or how can we, like, what's the difference between the momentums? And I feel like that's just such a different experience. And it's very hands-on, too, which, so you're not, we're not always just sitting there taking notes on the different, this is what electrical energy is, or this is what elastic is, and all that different stuff. It's very hands-on, which I personally really like, so...
I also like how it's sort of an application of math. So, you get these formulas and it's not just a formula anymore. It's something you can actually use in your life. And when you're sitting in math class and you have a similar formula, you're like, oh, I already know that. So, it's sort of nice just to have that tucked away as a skill. And you can use your prior knowledge in this class a lot, too. That's something I really like because you'll have people asking a lot of questions. But if you just think about it logically, like, if you were to push a cart down a track and, like, what was going to happen, right? It's going to bounce off the wall and come back. That's just sort of a logical solution. So, you use your prior knowledge to figure it out on your own. And then you figure out, figure it out mathematically and it just sort of goes hand in hand. And I seem to find that pretty enjoyable in this class.
Well, let me ask you one follow-up question. Does it change the way you look at the world?
For me, it does. Because, for example, the momentum lab. So, one of the examples that Mr. Hermans told us was to, like, imagine the lab in, like, a bigger scenario. So, if you had a truck hitting a smaller car, you'd think, well, obviously, the truck is going to have the larger momentum. It's crashing into this little car. That's like what your prior knowledge would assume. And one thing that I've learned from this class is that you can't always trust those first assumptions because we kind of challenge those things. And it's, like, I now will sit in class and all the thought of, man, this chair is holding me up. This is really weird to think about now. It kind of, it kind of like makes you look at the world in a different way, which I personally really love about the class, so...
The thing that, well, it changed my perspective on the world. Just, I mean, you start to think about these things, like, yeah, the chair is holding me up with normal force and I'm being held in by gravitational force. But I'll be thinking about it, like, my buddy in class will lean over and be like, dude, how much physics goes on with cars? Like, there's so much going on right there. And I just think that that's sort of a neat thought process to go through. Like, you see something and you'll think about how much actually went on right in that instant when it's in reality just sort of a simple-looking thing. And that's just sort of cool to me.
Mr. Hermans, you should feel free to bring your scientists back again. Lisa.
I loved both of your presentations. You did a great job. And I'm so impressed with the class and with Mr. Hermans. I'm just curious, were you both strong in science before you took this? Or do you have this new, found love for science after taking this class?
Well, for me personally, I've always had that, like, love of science and math and stuff like that. But going into this class, it's a combination of the two. And I feel like I've always excelled very well in math and science. But this class, again, has challenged me a lot. So, it's kind of like put that, like, new thinking on the world. So, you, even if you did really well before and with, again, middle school and elementary school, science, it kind of really does challenge that, which I personally really like. And it gave me a new appreciation for science and it gave me this whole new outlook. So, because of this class, I'm very excited for future stuff, like chemistry next year and things like that.
And it's nice that you found out as a freshman that you have this passion or this love rather than as a junior or senior when you would have taken this class, so...
Absolutely.
And what about you?
And, I mean, I was, I have always enjoyed science, but I wouldn't say I excelled at it. I sort of struggled and I had to put a lot of time and effort into studying. But like, really, this is a different experience because that was sort of, you know, lab reports and analysis. And this is a new way of looking at it. It's more hands-on and you can feel like things, like, you can feel force tension in a spring. And that's really nice just to have. And it's sort of, if something feels against what data you're getting, then you might have to challenge yourself a little bit. And that's just sort of nice to have a hands-on experience. And I feel like I'm enjoying this a lot, too.
Thank you. And congratulations to both of you. It was a great job.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Wonderful. And if you really want, just a footnote, if you want to see a really cool video, Google wind turbines and failure. And you will see the cross, the meeting of momentum and a wind turbine when things don't work well. It's really cool.
Absolutely. I'll check that out.
Check it out.
I hope nobody gets hurt.
No. Nobody got, nobody got hurt. No animals, no animals got... Thank you very much. All right. I feel like it's all like we're going to go downhill at this point. It's like... Should have saved you for last. All right. Item five, the consent agenda. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, the items on the consent agenda pass. Item number six, Chair's report. We're going to discuss the budget later on in the agenda. I'll repeat this again, but we have an opportunity to approve the budget tonight if we feel like that's the appropriate next step. We are pressed for time because we, did we? Yeah, we, yeah, I thought we lost, we lost the board meeting somewhere along the way. So, the next board meeting is the district meeting in which we need to have the board, we need to go into that meeting with an approved budget. So, if tonight, as we conclude the discussion on the budget, if we feel like we are ready to pass the budget, I would look for a motion from the floor to add the motion to pass the budget to the agenda, since it's not on the agenda, that would require a two-thirds vote. If we don't get that motion, or the motion fails if taken, then we're going to need to have a special meeting. And that special meeting will be next Monday night on the 25th, 7:00 p.m. here. So, I'll repeat it again when we get there, but keep that in mind as we, as we go forward. And that concludes, Michelle? Not to my knowledge, but if somebody has...
We thought it was the beginning, two-thirds.
Yeah, at any time. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right. So, Megan.
All right, we have some updates. First, let me say it is Board Appreciation Month. So, thank you, school board members, for everything you do. We recognize you are our super volunteers. These are things you do of your own time and the effort you put into making our students better. We appreciate. So, what we did was a little something for you, a little T-shirt. And when you open it up on the back, all of your names are on the back. So, this way, you cannot hide. Be proud of your board membership because we are certainly proud of you. So, you are rock star status. You're like, you're your own softball team, to coin a phrase. Oh, my goodness. If so... We, gonna tell you. Next, next year. We didn't want to number you. It would have, it would have put a lot of pressure if I had to give you all numbers. Like, I love you all equally. Oh, my goodness. Okay. So, continuing through, things that we have going on. No, thank you all. And we mean that sincerely from the entire district. We appreciate you. I expect them on, on April 1st. Go budget! All right. So, there are some congratulations that we have in order as well. I'd like to recognize Josh Jordan, who was a finalist for the Prudential Spirit of Community Award. Josh was among the top 10% of people considered for this award because of his work with autism awareness. And Kim Gallo was able to celebrate him and his family with a little ceremony of appreciation. And Josh has been the first student at Chapag that was even considered for this award. So, I think that is a fantastic testament to Josh. Additionally, last week, we were able to celebrate six of our students for the Litchfield County Superintendent Association Award. We celebrated that last Thursday evening. And we're very proud of Lexi Thomas, Skylar Santos, Liam Denning, Michael McCluskey for a second time, Erin Bailey for a second time, and Jennifer Hadad. So, they were recognized for strong character and academic achievement. So, we are very proud and it was a wonderful evening with them. And Matt Parachi has shared some of our athletic highlights. So, our winter athletics have come to a close this week. The boys' basketball and swimming finished their seasons. Our senior swimmer, Jack Pesci, made it to the state open where he finished 22nd in the state in the 100-yard backstroke. The boys' basketball team advanced to the NCAA Division V quarterfinals, which was the deepest tournament run since 2004. Additionally, our spring sports will begin their practice on Saturday, March 16th. Oh, that was last Saturday. And we have 137 Chapag High School students who are registered for at least one of our eight spring sports. So, it goes to say that we're going to have some more involvement and our students are really making certain they are well-rounded. Last week, on Tuesday, I was able to present with Kim Gallo and Lori Travato at the Gunn Memorial Library for our second community conversation in Washington. I appreciated the discussion and question about our future agri-science program. We definitely had some questions. People just trying to better understand where the numbers are coming from, what's happening with our enrollment. So, we were able to talk about hard numbers where we are today. The dates for Bridgewater and Roxbury are forthcoming. So, I look forward to announcing those dates as well. We have some field trips that I'd like to notify the board about. We have our grade 11 going to the Museum of Modern Art in New York on June 7. Additionally, our students in grades nine through 12 for the music classes will be going to the Great East Music Festival at Springfield High School. They will also do a little detour to Six Flags in Agwam, since they're in the neighborhood. So, that will be happening on May 3. As far as personnel, we have one resignation, Nicole Orlesky, who is the literacy tutor at Washington Primary. And that was effective on Friday. So, that concludes my updates.
I got an email that the Great East was canceled. Has that been restored since that email came out, or?
They put in a request for a field trip.
That must have been afterwards. Maybe they canceled because they forgot to request. Then they requested it and now it's no longer canceled.
Well, it could be. I can tell you, they submitted the request on Thursday.
Okay. The email came out before that. They must have said, oh, well, we can't do it. And they said, well, let's try. And I guess they could.
I guess it's there. But I appreciate and I will, I will dig deeper into that. But I can tell you, okay. Thank you for letting me know that was out there. Okay.
Good. Treasurers' report. Stephanie?
The Finance Committee has not met since our last Board of Ed meeting. But I hope everyone's had an opportunity to review the budget over the weekend, since we're going to be discussing it. But the exciting piece of news, which I don't want to steal from Nicole, is that we got our Moody's rating. And she really took a lot of time. She did the tough discussions and has been fielding questions from some of the town treasurers and finance committee people. But we ended up with a double A one rating, which is the highest that we can get without taxing authority. We thought we would be a double A two. But, Nicole, you want to add anything to your conversation with them? Or we know...
I think the upgrade was based on a couple of different factors, one of which was they liked that... Sorry, is that better? The upgrade was due to a couple of different factors. One was they liked the fact that we had a balance in our capital reserve fund. They don't see that often with regional school districts. It also, they relied heavily on the wealth levels in the towns that comprise our region. And those were the factors that weighed, I think, most heavily on the upgrade.
And we go to market, what's the date again?
Tuesday, the 26th.
Tuesday, the 26th. Great. Yeah. So, that's exciting. We'll look forward to that. We should get some more, some favorable rates because of that upgraded bond rating.
Yes. It will be more favorable than what we projected.
Very exciting. Okay. Good news. Yeah. So, that's it.
Done? Stephanie? Steph? Are you done? Okay. No, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure. Okay. So, moving to the committee reports. Bylaws, we met on the 4th, I believe it was. And our work is getting near completion. We're hoping that if we don't have the special meeting, we have a meeting on the 25th, which I think we should be able to wrap up. And there's another, there's another group of bylaws on the agenda for this evening, but getting near, getting near the end. Michelle, Ed Advance?
Just a quick report. We did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago and spent a fair amount of time talking about the facilities of the, of Ed Advance. They've gone through a long-term strategic plan, looking at the spaces that they own and the spaces that they need for their expanding special ed and alternative education programs. They've had some challenges. They've looked at several different properties that they tried to purchase and those have fallen through. One was the old Torrington Campus. One was a, somebody's parrot. It was a school that used to be, belonged to a church. They were selling it and then they decided not to. So, they've had some challenges. They've found a solution, a long-term lease that they think is going to work. But that coupled with the fact that the state support has declined Thankfully, they had money set aside. I don't know what you call, you know, a rainy day fund of sorts. So they are able to continue, but they know that they have to, moving forward, have to sort of relook at the way they operate. Interestingly enough, Jeff Kitchen, who's the director, had a meeting of all the resks in the state. And of all of the resks, Ed Advance, which is our resk, had the largest rainy day fund set aside of any of them. So, and we're not the largest. We don't have the largest operating budget. I think Craig probably does. Yeah. Because that's the Hartford one. So anyway, so as a board, that's one of the things, as a board member, we have to approve, you know, the budget of our resk. So we had to look at the finances and the workaround that they had. So that was our last meeting.
Thank you. Facilities, Greg.
Yes. The Facilities Committee met tonight. We spent most of our meeting talking about the need for a roof on this building and exactly how that project might work. One of the things we're starting to sort of drill down on to is about how long we can wait and still be able to do it the way we want. The important thing to remember is that if we do this roof restoration that we're proposing, we can't, I mean, if we were to do a brand-new roof on the building and spend the full $6 million, we could wait a couple of years to do that. We could probably wait a year or two to do that. But we can't do that for a roof restoration. That's something we're going to have to do a little bit sooner. It would be ideal to do it this year, and we think that that more than likely is gonna push it into next year because of budgetary concerns. So we understand that. But after that, we're pretty much starting to lose the ability to do a restoration. And then we would have to go to a more expensive thing. And so what we hope to do is, we hope to commence at some point in the near future, perhaps right after the budget is through, and we've gotten that off of people's minds. We want to sit down and have a conversation with the towns about why we selected this restoration procedure. Because when you think about it, if we were to do just simply a second layer on top of the existing roof, we could get away with a $3.5 million expenditure, but we would be guaranteeing us a $6 million expenditure plus inflation 20 years down the road. So over a 20-year period of time, you would end up spending probably something close to $10 to $12 million. Or you could do the restoration in over a 30-year period of time. You could spend $4.5 million or, you know, $1.5 million now, $1.5 million, $1.5 million plus a little inflation factor. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to figure out if we can, we're working on the process of trying to figure out how we're gonna educate people so they understand that this is a project that if we do it a little bit sooner, you know, a little bit sooner than waiting for the roof to be done, we will be able to save money over the next 20 years, significant amounts of money over the next 20 years on this. So it's a process of education. And we think that if people were able to understand that, they would see that this is a good way to go about it. So that's what we talked about tonight. I had a good ranging discussion on that. And we will continue doing that because we want to figure that piece out. And when I say education, I mean that means sitting down in the towns with citizens, taxpayers, voters, talking about this project, this process, and how best to do it. I think transparency is the word.
Thank you. Michelle, policies?
We had a meeting tonight, although we did not have a quorum. But Julie and I were able to get a lot of background work done comparing some policies. So that's it. And actually, it says policies bylaws, but bylaws are meeting separately. And has bylaws on the agenda for tonight. So.
Okay. All right. Agri-science. Megan.
Thank you, Colin. Oh, no worries. All right. While that warms up, just some quick updates that we have, and then we can walk through our slide. But the student commitment for our first round of acceptance letters were due on Wednesday, March 13th. We had 45 out of the 52 students commit to the program. So now we move to our waitlist for some of those positions. The ones that we don't move to waitlist, one of our sophomores decided not to join. We did not have a waitlist beyond that. But we will certainly walk through that in our next slide so you can see the breakdown of how that happened. We also completed our first round of interviews for our agri-science teachers. We were able to interview, I believe we had 10 people that we interviewed, some strong agricultural background. It was, we actually found that the field, they had a lot of diversity in their interest. And so whereas we had some who their background may have been food science, they were talking about the animals that they were raising for their food science. And that was the thing that I think was most impressed with. Additionally, the amount of them who said they've been waiting for this program to open, they've been watching for the postings. So I think the word was, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, came up with more than one applicant. So we now move on to the second round, which is where they will actually perform a lesson in front of a group of observers. It's great that if you can talk the talk, we want to see how you do in front of our students. So they know that is coming up. And again, there's no offer that we're going to provide at this time. Everyone knows that these are still pending our budget. So we've been very forthcoming with our applicants, and they are still very willing to come along the ride with us. So that is exciting. We also had our second conversation at the Gun Memorial Library. So things have been going well with the community. People are really just, they know we've been quiet. They know we've been working behind the scenes. So to be able to come out and have samples of our curriculum so people could take it with them, to make certain that we're now socializing as much as possible where we are in this program, and we're not talking about what might be, we're able to talk in factual numbers. So it definitely makes for a smoother conversation. We have some activities that we have to do, making certain, again, the websites to the sending towns. We're there with some of them. I need to make certain all of them are on board. We are now in the process of scheduling our agri-science students. So those who are accepted, our Director of Guidance is going out to the towns to work with the students. Information we need to know, how many of them take French? How many of them take Spanish? Because that has implications for us as we're doing the scheduling. So we're gathering that information as we speak. Additionally, the FFNE review, I think Don and I have a date with the state on April 3rd. And Council Booz will be bringing the FFNE to the Building Committee next Monday in order for consideration for approval so we can move forward. Additionally, again, we're still working with our union to develop our memorandum of understanding regarding the agri-science teachers. For us, right now, and Council Booz is starting to work with the timing of purchasing all of the materials. So that way, we don't want it too soon into the building because of the fact that construction is going on. But we also want to make certain that we are fully furnished when students walk in the door. So, oh, I don't like the way the black looks against the blue. So we'll fix that afterwards. However, this is the enrollments that we have. So for our sending towns, right now, we have seven that we were considering for enrollment. New Milford, we had nine. New Fairfield, two. Brookfield, four. Sherman, four. Newtown, four. And we have other, which is one. And that is a special circumstance in which we are working with another district. We also wanted to make certain, you knew, how did we get to the numbers that were in our budget presentation? Because if you notice, it said 109 from the sending towns. So we took the information we had from the enrollment. And if we held it constant over the years, recognizing we have caps, it took you to 102. But then we knew that we had some variables, because looking at some of the averages from the other towns, it actually brought us to 115. When we took the average between 102 and 115, it gets you 108.5. I refuse to accept half a child. So we went to 109. But just so you know, that's how we factored in the budget that you saw before you. So I wanted to make certain that I showed that. So our first cohort and where we are at this time. See, white definitely looks better against that. Okay. In Sherman, we had four applied, four accepted, four have committed. So that is set. In Newtown, we had four apply, four accepted, four have committed. In New Milford, we had 16 that had applied. We actually had 10 accepted, and the asterisk is the tuition-in student that we had. So it's recognition of that. And so at this time, we have, our total is 10. New Fairfield, two applied, two accepted, two committed. In Danbury, we had 15 apply. We had seven accepted. At this time, four have committed. We have now gone to the waitlist in Danbury. As you can see, we have additional students that are waiting. We have done the reach-out, I believe. Kim, correct me if I'm wrong. We have two who have already committed, and so now we're waiting on that third person.
Coming back up to six.
We are. Yes. I'm sorry. This is today's information. So, okay. Yes. We're back up to six. Yes. Yep. In Brookfield, we had nine who applied. We accepted four at this point. Three have committed. And so we have the waitlist that we're going down for Brookfield as well. In Region 12, we had 24 apply. We had 20 accepted. 17 have committed. And we went down the waitlist, and that person who waitlisted already said yes. So that's where we're at, the 18 at this time from Region 12. And again, we had from the other, one applied, one accepted, one committed. So as of today, we actually were at 45. We're now, if you take, we had the one additional one from Chapag, plus the other two. We are at 48 today, and we still have to continue down our waitlist. So taking this out, this is what our freshman cohort looks like. Again, same numbers, just walking you all the way through so you can see how that works. Again, 67 had applied, 45 were accepted. At this time, we have 41 who have committed. And for our sophomores, we had seven apply, seven were accepted, six have committed. So we know that right now, the last model that we had was the 6.0 model that was shown to the board back in, that was the 25-year projection of how agri-science was going to work. And there are some adjustments we need to make to the model. What we're going to do is, we will present that at the next board meeting. Once we have, we're going to market on Tuesday. Additionally, we're gonna have some factors that will start to firm up. So we will be able to get closer to actuals for our 7.0 model as we're projecting going forward. So. Any questions?
Yes. So if you can go back to your schedule?
One.
The schedule? First one?
Oh, first one, yeah.
So looking at, well, kind of like I'm moving myself down the timeline because today is not, you're more like left of enrollment. So is curriculum done?
Curriculum is set for 9 through 12, yeah. Curriculum.
Oh, four pathways? Or how many pathways?
Five. One has a dotted line after the, so we do have, where it goes up into the, we're backing it for environmental.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Our environmental pathway, we are projecting to have an AP Environmental Science class. So we have the dotted line path for that.
Okay. And let's see. I'm not sure if the, well, I guess we'll hear from Greg to see what, you know, with the, you know, because this is not a precise chart, right? So some things may be slightly skewed to the timeline, but.
Yeah. Steel, we moved further towards April. And I can talk more to that. So that.
That's what I thought.
And as far as.
And you're ahead on recruitment, right? Because you're, well, that's recruitment starts for next year's class, correct? Not the staffing recruitment.
We are continuing the recruitment efforts. And I know when we talked with Lori Travato, yes, last presentation, we were talking about regoing for spring. And I think that becomes especially important for our private schools because a lot of those decisions are made over the summertime. So we have had that conversation.
Thanks. One last question. The FFE, when does that need to be wrapped up and finalized to support the schedule?
Sooner rather than later. Really, at this time, bringing it to the Building Committee. As you can see, it's a very tight timeline. They're meeting on Monday. We're going to the state the following Wednesday. So for us, it really is, once we go to the state, the state needed to have our curriculum in hand, needs to have our FFNE scoped out, as well as having our, as well as having our map of the build. So they reconsider all of that, and they're gonna go line by line for each purchase and compare it against our curriculum.
Okay. So schedule-wise, it's tight. We have no room really for, right, for any further delays. But we haven't impacted the building schedule yet.
We have, no. And FFNE, anything that was already a fixture that was for the build has already been accrued and was part of the bids that came when the builds happened. So some of it went into Phase 2. It's now those things that go into Phase 3 that are specific to the curriculum.
Okay. Thank you. Michelle?
I was just gonna ask, when you, could you share though, your slide presentations, not necessarily right this second, but in the future? Because I can't read the far side of that.
I can, I will definitely.
That would be awesome.
I will send it to everybody. So I apologize.
Thanks. That's okay.
I noticed it too when I went to put up. I'm like, oh, I don't like the color contrast. So, yeah.
Yeah. It's just, yeah, some of it I can't read. Cool. Thanks.
Julie?
Is the curriculum out on the website for the public to see yet?
That's a great question. If it's not, we can certainly link it up. I actually have samples here today with me. So if there's anything you'd like to, I brought with me the animal pathway all the way through, as well as the overview for the exploratory agri-science, ninth grade.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
John?
I had a question about the two teachers being hired. Obviously, there's four pathways. So I'm assuming that each has an expertise in one of the pathways? And are they all able to teach the introductory courses?
When you get your agri-science certification, it is for all of agri-science. So yes, you have people who have specialties. And so, and I learned a lot during interviews. Yes, they have things that become, you know, some people are very much into animals and others are very much into the food science. But yes, they have to have an understanding of multiple pathways. So it's just coming down to expertise.
Ready for other questions?
I have one. Megan, can you go back to the slide that I think showed the freshman cohort? I just want to make a comment. I'm not, I don't want, I'm not asking for an answer or anything, but just, I see a large percent, a lot of the towns, a large percentage of those who applied were accepted and committed. With regard to Danbury, I have no idea what your judgments were or how those decisions were made. And I trust you implicitly, you and your team, that's fine. But I just know all the angst that we went through with regard to Danbury and how many they would be sending, et cetera, et cetera. I'm thrilled to see 15 applied. I would just hate to see them get discouraged. That's all. But I just ask you to keep that in mind for the future.
No. I appreciate, one of the things that we have done, Jim, is we've asked when they didn't accept, what was the reason? And so we do want to find out, you know, why, what would, you know, deter them. I can tell you, for two of our applicants, it was, we don't have a football program. And so can't do a lot about that. But it is one in which then we should also be forthcoming when we go to talk to these towns to let them know, here are the sports that are actually available too. So this way, we're not spinning some of those wheels either. We want to make certain that, you know, they feel that this is time well invested. We certainly want to open up as many as we can. In Danbury, we watch closely because we do know that that relationship and the time and effort that was put into, we want to make certain we're seeing all of those numbers actualized. So we do, right now, we are going into the waitlist, and we're hoping that we can get all seven.
Excuse my ignorance on this. When it's number, so 15 applied, number accepted, that's, I assume that's the number accepted by us?
Correct. Seven.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
On that subject, you're, I assume, also being careful about the cap, too? That if you accept 15, they all come. We're well over half the cap. And what happens two years from now if they all stay? So that's probably why you're kind of budgeting your acceptances? Is that right? Thank you.
I certainly wasn't suggesting that they should all be accepted.
Okay. Greg?
What are you?
You want it? All right.
I thought you were coming after the microphone. Get your own.
Get enough stage.
Get your own.
Well, it's gonna get exciting here pretty soon in terms of the construction because we continue to move and to march forward. I'll show you a little bit of what we've been looking at here. Hopefully, I'll press the right button and not cause us to go somewhere else. This is in the north.
Well, on that subject, you're, I assume, also being careful about the cap, too? That if you accept fifteen, they all come, we're well over half the cap, and what happens two years from now if they all stay? So that's probably why you're, you're kind of budgeting your acceptances? Is that right? Thank you.
I certainly wasn't suggesting that they should all be accepted.
What are you?
You want it, all right?
I thought you were coming after the microphone. Get your own.
Getting upstaged.
Get your own.
Well, it's going to get exciting here pretty soon in terms of the construction because we continue to move and to march forward. I'll show you a little bit of what we've been looking at here. Hopefully, I'll press the right button and not cause us to go somewhere else. This is in the north end of the building. What you're seeing up there hanging from the ceiling are the HVAC units in the kitchen area. And the walls are up. The walls will start being painted in not-too-distant future. As soon as we get all the ladders and the other stuff out of there, the, we're getting close to that. The plumbing is in. In a lot of places, it's being tested. It's almost, a lot of the testing is finished. The walls have been approved. They're going to be closed in soon. As you can see, this work continues apace. Those walls are now all up and many of them are sheet, are starting to be sheet rocked. The interesting thing about this, these rooms is unlike the present school, there will not be any light switches. What will happen is, is you enter the area, a sensor where the light switch usually is will, motion sensors will determine you're in the room, it will turn the lights on. And when there's no motion in the room, the lights will go out. And we're going to be saving a good bit of energy as a result of that. But that's, it's a big change in the way our, our school will be done. And those kind of items will be eventually, the way we've installed the electrical systems, Mr. O'Leary has made sure it's been done in a way that it allows us in the future to spread them throughout the building. So we're no longer stuck with a proprietary system that we're forced to spend enormous amounts of money to spread. We can instead do it in a normal fashion, at much lower costs. Again, outside, there's a lot of work going on. Those of you that were concerned about the circuitous route to the parking lot on the north end of the building, that is now not so circuitous, although some people have expressed not understanding how to get in there because we are now traversing the actual road that's going to be there after the project is finished, as opposed to the old road that went to the parent drop-off turnaround area. But now they have moved their construction past the north lot and it's moving up in the direction of the, the animal building. This is the south end of the building. They had started, they had started to construct and now have completed the, the pathway that goes down from the, the live, this, this area, the media center here, down through the science area into the greenhouse. That path, that hallway has now been constructed. We've got a lot of other rooms, the, as you can see, they're, they're just continuing to work in there and it's, it's moving along quite a bit. That's, it's much past that stage now. And this construction has gone up relatively quickly and continues. Outside, we are working very hard because that enormous pit has been dug. As I think I mentioned last time, eighteen feet deep. It's the deepest excavation on the site for the project. And this is for the pump house, where the electrical and water will be in there. That is going to be one heck of, it's one heck of a hole, if you've taken a look at it. We dug down eighteen feet. Did we find ledge? No. Did we find hardpan and crappy soils? No. We found some of the best soil you've ever seen. And it gives us a high degree of confidence that when they dig the rest of the foundation holes, which are only six to seven feet deep, that we should, we should be in pretty good shape in terms of the kind of things that would cause us to spend a lot of our reserves. So that, and, and if you see on the end of that, you see it kind of takes a dog leg to the left. That is where the underground tank for the, is going to be installed to run the water for the sprinklering of all, all the new work that's being done, including the, the north end, inside the building improvements, and the science lab inside the existing building, those areas are going to be sprinkled. And there's a tank going in the ground there. That tank is seventy-five feet long. I want to say it's twelve or fourteen feet across, nine feet high or more. And that tank, empty. It's being assembled right now. It's being installed in ten pieces. There's a large crane out there. If you go out, take a look at the big crane, it's going to be installing that over the next day in pieces. That tank, empty, weighs three hundred thousand pounds. The tank itself, one hundred and fifty tons. When you put the water in it, imagine the thirty thousand gallons of water added to three hundred thousand pounds. A water weighs eight and a half pounds a gallon. So think about that. You can do the math. That's a pretty heavy piece of, of work. Again, these are the inside of the north end of the, south end of the building. We are in the process, you see that, at the bottom, you see that row of block. That row of block is actually for the outside wall. We had to build the walls outer, outside the building so we could build the actual wall that's going in. In that section of the project, the mansard roof will be removed and replaced. And those outside walls are going up as we speak, and we will soon be removing the outside stuff. We will actually have our walls on the outside of the building completed. And in the not-too-distant future, windows will be going into those walls. So that, that's working out quite nicely. This actually is a mechanical room and whatnot. You can see some of the copper at the top has been installed and is working. And again, these are a lot of pictures showing you a lot of the same things. The details is the walls go up and are sheet rocked. And you see, that, that actually is the back hallway. And that, that allows light from the exterior windows of the building, those clustery windows at the very top there. They allow light to pass into inner spaces within the space. So that's part of the, the design, so we can get light and sunlight into the building. Again, we are really moving. I know it doesn't look exciting yet, but it's moving along. And there we go. When we took the, the science lab down, the information, the stuff down, we found that someone had painted that peace sign in nineteen seventy when the building was built. The person who painted that sign, assuming they were a sixteen-year-old student, would be sixty-six years old today. So something to think about. But that is a genuine, from the peace and love era peace sign that we have in Chapag. And we've got an even closer-up picture of that, and I think that's somehow going to make its way and be framed in the building for future generations to see. So, so that, that's sort of where we are. I just want to give you the quick rundown on what's happening. We are breaking ground this week on the north addition to the building for the, the shops. We will be breaking ground either late in the week or the beginning of next week on the south foundation for the greenhouse. And shortly after that, we will start the foundation for the animal building outside. Steel will be arriving next month. And we will be erecting the buildings come the end of April, early part of May. And that's more or less where we are. We expect to have delivery of most of the project by August and the remainder of it by December. The south parking lot will be finished in time for the start of school next year. And that includes removing virtually all of the sidewalk in front of the building and redoing that whole thing. And that should be available to us for the start of the school year. And the question is whether the north parking lot will be finished in the fall or whether it too will be available at the start of the school year. We're still working on that. And ONG is working the hardest they can do to push the schedule. If you noticed, we didn't really have a winter this year. We had a very mild winter. There wasn't a lot of snow, there wasn't a lot of ice. It was cold in January, but February and so far, March have been pretty good. And as a result, site work construction continued apace without interruption through the entire winter. And that's going to give us a good, good start into the spring season.
So my favorite question, sounds like we are on schedule.
We are on schedule. There, we are still crossing our fingers that without some problem coming up, it might be possible to push the schedule up a little bit. But we're, we're on schedule. We are still approximately one million dollars under budget, which means that should we not spend any of that last million dollars, we, it would be three hundred thousand dollars that we would have. State funding an average of seventy percent. So it'd be three hundred thousand that we would have, which is sort of a good number to have in your pocket. I hope it continues on that because we still have to build a building for all of our vehicles and our gasoline-powered equipment. And the cost of that is now dropped. It was originally estimated somewhere around a million dollars and it's now estimated around three hundred thousand dollars. So we're making progress on, on that.
That was my second other favorite question, is are we on budget? So.
We are under budget and therefore we are on budget. You know, I, I hate when people say, oh, it's going to be impossible for us to spend the million dollars that ONG has got, but...
No.
It is possible. And you never know what's going to happen when you dig in the ground or do anything. The good news is that that eighteen-foot hole did not reveal any soil issues that we expect.
No, we, it's just a snapshot. We are where we are and, and there's still a lot, there's still a lot of time left and so fingers crossed that we are, our good fortunes continue in that regards.
Yes, and we hope that when we get out to the hillside, that we don't end up finding something buried there we didn't expect. So that's, that's the good, good news.
Yeah, I mean, just having built two or three houses, I, I didn't see any insulation. How is that being done? How is the building being insulated?
What'll happen is the exterior of the building, you, you see, you see cinder block going up for the exterior of the building. The exterior of the building will have, I believe it's a three-inch piece of rigid foam insulation attached to it. And then the exterior cladding, which is brick, will be attached, sandwiching that three-inch piece of rigid foam insulation plus an airspace. And that's how the walls themselves will be insulated.
What about the roofs, the ceilings?
Well, the roofs, the roofs there will be insulated to a very much higher degree. The ones being constructed new...
Right.
Will be insulated to a very much higher degree than our existing roof is. One of the reasons why, if we were to replace the roof on this building right down to the deck and do a full replacement, one of the reasons why it's so expensive is because they have to put so much more insulation to meet code now and to get the pitches of the roof that we'd end up having to raise all the parapets around the building. And that's the extra million and a half, two million dollars that, that tops that out. So our roof is not as insulated as it would be if it were done under modern code. But it's something that, it's just not worth the, the cost at this point of doing that. The savings wouldn't, wouldn't pay for it. But the walls of this building will be extremely well insulated, as will the roofs. These will be energy-efficient buildings that will save us a fair amount of money on energy costs over the comparable space in the existing building. Although this building's getting better on energy costs, but it's because of, you know, work on lights and other things.
Any other questions? Thanks, Greg. Nicole, did you have anything else you wanted to add regarding the finances?
Yeah, I think we spoke the last time about the state had approved our first payment. We are still actually awaiting receipt of that payment. And they have not yet opened the science lab, so we can't put those costs into the portal yet. But I have a call scheduled for an update with Michelle Dixon of the state on Thursday. I'm hoping that she'll have it open by then so that I can start putting the science lab costs in.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Nicole? All right. Moving to item number eight on the agenda, our, our discussion of the proposed budget. So I'm going to, well, Stephanie's going to bring us through the discussion. I wanted to introduce a summary that's been worked on, but Alan is dying to ask a question. So Alan?
I'd like to move that we add the approval of this budget to the agenda.
Second?
All right, I have a second. Any discussion? Pete?
I wouldn't support that until we get into the three towns and find out, if we have a discussion in the facilities committee today. My personal opinion is that we could tentatively agree on a number tonight amongst us.
But until you get into the towns and make a presentation to the people themselves of what we're thinking about approving or presenting to the public, without them being involved and giving us feedback, you, the first budget will get buried. I mean buried. We need to get into the three towns and explain why we're doing, what we're doing, what it's costing, why it's costing. They need to know this. I don't think we can just say, okay, let's, we'll have a budget, we'll approve the, whatever was presented to us, five-point-three percent. Some board members may want to reduce it somewhat, I have no problems with that. But without hearing from the people themselves, not just the selectmen, the superintendent is going to meet, I presume, with the selectmen, possibly the finance committees, but we need to meet with the people. We need to present to them, this is not just our budget, it's their budget. They approved, they directed the board to do AgSTEM. They directed us to, they want the roof fixed, they want the system run A-plus. So I think it's important for us just to sit here and discuss a number and say, this is the number we're going out with it, or this is the number we're going to the public with. I would be careful how we do that. I don't know how board members want to do that. But I really believe that we need to have a meeting with the citizens in each of the three towns with a tentative proposal. That's my opinion.
Okay. Lisa?
I guess I'm just confused. Wouldn't that be this venue? Like if people had questions, wouldn't they come to the Board of Ed rather than us going to the towns? I, I'm just wondering how that works? Because I don't know that we've ever, I mean, I know the budget is, is different this year, but we've never gone to the towns before, really. I'm just, I'm just wondering, if people had concerns, wouldn't they come here to our meeting?
They, you would, you would, you would expect that they have an opportunity to comment at the beginning of these meetings. The budget was presented last week initially, this evening, of course. And then we have a, we have a district-wide meeting where we'll, we'll probably hear more. We're, we're just pressed right now. So if we, if, again, if we don't do this tonight, we could easily have a special meeting between now and two weeks from now. As long as we do it before this time next week, we'll be fine. If the, if the board's inclined to delay or not take up the vote tonight and do it at some other date, just, just ask everybody to make yourself available so that when we have the special meeting, we have a quorum of the board. At the very least, I'd like, you know, I think we'd all like the whole board present voting on our budget, rather than just the minimum amount. But that's, but usually that's, when we have special meetings, sometimes you're, you're fighting calendars.
Right. I'm just not sure when we're going to be able to go out and to hold a special meeting in the communities, like he suggested.
Michelle?
It's just sort of to echo what Lisa's saying. I hear what you're saying, Pete, and this isn't a particularly challenging budget, but the order of the process is that in order to go out to the community to talk about it, we actually have to come up amongst ourselves first with what our draft budget is. And then we have the hearing and they, the public comes and talks to us. And, and they were avail, were able to come and talk to us last week and this week. So that's where the dialogue happens. And then we continue to educate the public all the way up until the vote. But we can't, we can't delay the board discussion and at least agreeing amongst ourselves where we think our starting point is. So I, I am speaking in favor of the motion to at least have the opportunity to approve a number tonight. If we get to one, we might not, but we have a, a majority of the board here. So I would like to have that opportunity.
So again, this is the, the motion that's on the floor is to just add it to the agenda. We still need then a motion to be made and a vote to be taken on whether or not it passes or it gets approved, so. Any other comments? Stephanie?
Just also so you know, Pete, that we are, we are on the agenda for the Boards of Finance in all three towns. Megan went tonight to the Washington Board of Finance. We're on the schedule tomorrow night for Roxbury, Wednesday night for Bridgewater. I guess we can, I don't know if you want to update on the meeting tonight. Before I clear this side of the room, I'll apologize for not going to that. Both my kids have the flu, so I missed it today. But I, I also hear what you're saying about the townspeople being involved in the process. I think they should be. Again, you know, we presented to the town last board meeting, again, the discussion tonight. Hopefully, if anyone from the town wants to go to those Board of Fin, their, their individual town Board of Finance meetings, that's open to them as well. But, you know, in the, in the essence of time, again, I'm not sure that it would be possible to call town halls in each town in the next week before even a special meeting. So, you know, we're really making an effort to bring all of this information in a distilled and consistent way to each community. And hopefully, their town leaders will also be able to answer any questions, as well as that's what we're all here for, is to answer questions from individually. So I think that's, that's why the motion would be made tonight, just to attempt to, to see if we even want to entertain the idea of...
Pete?
It's my understanding you want to agree on a number tonight, is that my understanding?
Potentially.
Want to vote on a number?
Potentially, yes. Potentially, yes.
Well, I'll tell you this, this is my 15th year on the board. If you think you can just go to the finance committee and listen to them and your budget's gonna pass, you're grossly mistaken. You need to get into the three towns and have a meeting with the people. Even if we agree on a number tonight, if you want to agree on a number, whatever the number is, that number isn't gonna pass necessarily unless you get feedback from the people whether they're gonna support that number. Just because we agree on a number doesn't mean we should go out to referendum with that number. That's what I'm saying. Because you'll get, you'll get beat up by the people.
No, I, I, your point's well taken, but I think in, at least in the conversations I've been a part of, I would say that this year in particular, and this is what we're gonna walk through once we get past this motion. This year in particular is a very, um, it's, it's, I'll say it's, it's an anomalous year because it's the first year that the Ag program is really hitting in full force, right? Once we get past this particular budget and we have this discussion next year, you're not gonna see a big pop for agri-science because it'll already have been in the base. So the level of communication back to the towns is gonna be critical, more so Pete, than it's ever been. Because if people walk into, um, and, and just depending on how the referendum is worded and, and we need to explore what kind of freedom, what kind of options we have with the wording of the referendum. But if people go in there and just read what's, uh, what's been presented as a 5% budget, they're gonna- Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be an instant, right? So there's a lot of education has to go on. It starts with the selectmen, the finance committee, and, and it fans out from there. Because my personal feeling is that's where I think this budget is, is most vulnerable is to the education, not necessarily why the number is what the number is, right? If, if that makes sense. Yeah. I, there's no, I, I don't think anybody's arguing with you. Yeah. The, the question tonight is, is the budget as it's presented, if it, if the board is, if it meets the board's satisfaction, then the board should vote. So, and then we got, we get out. Now, we could always come back if we learn something and we feel like we need to vote again before we hit the district meeting. Uh, we still have the option of revisiting the budget. So it is not, you know, a, a done deal if we vote tonight and learn something. But if we vote tonight and don't necessarily learn something that causes us to want to change, we then don't need to have a special meeting.
Haven't we done that before too? Where we, we voted and changed the budget?
Um, sure. I, I think we did, at least in my tenure, I think it's happened at recent points.
I remember doing that.
Yeah, so it's, it's-
Maybe, I don't know. I just feel like I know we remember doing that.
Well, right, right, at the meeting after the hearing.
Yeah.
I think we did.
Yeah, we-
Okay.
So as long as somebody puts it back on the floor who voted on the, in the affirmative, they can, we can bring it back.
Well, to bring it to our attention.
Greg?
Yeah.
Sorry, Greg?
Yeah, I was gonna say that, um, I, Pete makes a very good point that we have got to do some education work. And, and the, the thing to remember is the ability to spend money to educate ends when we vote to put it to referendum. So while we might approve this tonight, and I don't have a problem with approving a budget tonight, going out, doing our spade work in the communities, if we find something, we may be able to tweak it. But I've gone through this budget and I've looked at what we have to spend because of programs we've committed to. And if you look at this budget, you're gonna realize that about 97.23% of it is not up. You can't not spend it. I mean, there are certain things you have to spend. I mean pupil, pupil services, special services. There's a whole raft of things in there that when you start adding them up, debt service and other things. And you add it to the fact that 72% of the budget is salaries and benefits that have been negotiated and are based on union contracts. There's no walking back from those. And so when you start out with 72% of your budget already determined, and then when you look at the fixed costs and other programmatic things we've committed to, totaling up the rest of the 97.23%, there isn't a lot of room to play with here because this is a very tight budget, although it's a, it's an expand, it's expanded. It's expanded for reasons of program that we have, we are committed to. So, so I, I think we need to educate, we need to do it big time. But I would urge that we explain this budget in our pieces that are mailed differently than we've done in the past. We need to make sure we convey the essence of why this is important and why this amount is what it is. And that we hope that that amount by the tuition of these students being paid in is gonna be reduced when that tuition money shows up at the end of the year. And I think that's important to explain that and make sure people understand that. And we can't do it the way we've always done it. We need to really look at that carefully.
So the motion on the floor is to just add this potential of voting on this tonight to the agenda. I'd like to clear that before we continue. All good points Greg, but can we do that unless we have? Pete, do you have a comment on that?
No, I mean, go ahead.
Okay, so all those in favor of adding the potential to vote or approve on, on the budget tonight, please raise your hand. Alright, it looks like all those opposed. Alright, the motion passes unanimously, the item is added to the agenda. Now, we'll talk about the budget.
Okay, well, what I, in reference to what Greg says, we can do mailings and all those things, but there's a personal aspect to the budget that's, doesn't get conveyed in a mailing so easy because it's impersonal. We have to make the budget personable.
Mm-hmm.
And the way you do that is, you, the superintendent can go to the selectmen and the finance committee, but we are the people. They elected us. We need to speak to them directly.
Agreed.
So I think whether we, personally, I would, we have the district meeting, but I think that's, that would be the summation of us getting to the public, meeting with them.
Pete, I, Pete, I think personally, if we relied on just having that one meeting as, as, that's, that's it-
Right.
Then we're asking for whatever fate we got.
That's correct. So I just want to make the budget personal.
Yeah, I-
Personal, that's-
I, I think you'll find agreement all around. Again, especially this year, we're gonna need all hands on deck. Anybody who, um, you know, we need to recruit people too to help us with the messaging because it's, it's a complicated budget this year because of the mechanics. So what I'd like to do, and to that end, talking with, 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 with Megan about, about the budget and how we can communicate it, I think the one thing we wanted to, to do is to create a, um, a, a one pager. A piece that we can leave behind with, um, our town officials. We can leave behind with anybody who, um, could help us explain the budget and, and where, and where the numbers are coming from, so we can be in more places than just once. So this piece was put together. I'm gonna walk you through it. Uh, and then we can get into the, the budget. But I, I wanted to bring everybody through it. Any comments, any changes? You know, we'll, we'll certainly take those and Megan will take those. But then this becomes one of our main tools here to, to drive that communication, Pete. So what was done here was if, this thing, alright, the pointer's working. So the walk here, maybe we should, yeah, we should hand those out. Thank you. Alright, so you should have a copy of this in front of you. So if you look at the, the top section, it's just, so this is just big chunks. So we got, here on the left side, where our revenue is being generated from, we have our tuitioning in students, which includes Sherman, the agri-science tuition, which brings us to a total revenue, which is of course an estimated number because until we have people showing up in September, we won't know exactly what the number is. But basically, we are going to generate nearly three quarters of a million dollars in tuition revenue. Looking over at the budget, this, the general budget, which is, I'll say, the legacy, um, budget that we're, for, for Region 12, is this line item, is 28, uh, 21.8 in change and has an increase over last year of essentially zero. So the budget to run the school is zero. It's a flat budget. When you layer in agri-science, it's, um, I'm having trouble reading that number too. It's 533,000 of budget, operating budget to run agri-science. So that's, the teachers, et cetera, are in that number. That's 2.4% of the increase. The next line item is the debt associated with the, the agri-science. That's 461,000, driving two plus percent increase of the budget. And then finally, the debt for the science labs is 147, 148,000. And that's 0.06% of the budget, which brings us to, to the total budget of five and a quarter. So four plus, four and a half percent of that five is all the agri-science program. Again, the core budget is flat. Agri-science is bringing four and a half plus. And then the science labs, which is accounts for, for the total budget. So then when you pull, when you net off how much revenue that these programs are bringing in, it's offsetting that increase by three and a half percentage points, which brings us to a net budget of effectively 1.7. So the talk track that really has to follow this budget is that even though on paper we need to budget at a gross budget, which is the five and a quarter, we're really talking about a net budget of 1.7. So people see five and a quarter, they need to believe and think 1.7 because that's how this is gonna work. Going forward, the revenue side, as we bring in more students, the revenue side is gonna continue to have more and more impact to the budget. So if we'd scroll down, I'm sorry. Will it work? Oh, is that the mouse?
Yep.
Yeah, it's a little-
It's okay.
Anthony, before you go to the bottom of the chart-
Yes, sir.
Sure. I have just one observation on the top.
Yes.
I think this is really good. Um, however, I think where the tuition in section of it is-
Mm-hmm.
You need to drop it one line because you need that 77308-
Oh, yeah.
-total revenue to be on the same line as the revenue line.
Yep, no, that's a very good catch. Thank you. I agree with you.
Otherwise, it's confusing.
I got it. Alright, so Megan, if you could just scroll down. So the detail of, of where the budget is coming from in terms of budgets and salaries is, is the next block. So I want to skip down to the bottom, right, is the budget walk. So we get into, the gross budget is 22.9. That's a five and a quarter percent increase, less the tuition for tuitioning in, I mean, less, yeah, less the tuitioning in, less the tuition and grant money from AgSTEM, leaves a net cost of 21. And that 21.8 is 1.7% uh, increase. So this is basically, you know, again, if you walk out of here and you want to describe what's going on with the budget, these are, these are the levers that are, that are telling the story. So when we think about what do the people need to know? The general budget's flat. Our first, this is our first budget with agri-science. We expected this bump in year one. The science labs were in desperate need of renovation. The tuition revenue goes directly to the towns, right? It doesn't come to the district. Therefore, we must referendum at, at the gross budget number of 22.9. And again, the headliner is the budget is effectively a 1.7 budget. So we're gonna go back and check with council. Megan, if you could, if you could do that with, with Tom. And we need to understand what, um, how we can word the referendum. How much of this talk track can we actually put in the referendum itself? Uh, 'cause hopefully we'll be able to put something in there rather than just saying, please approve a five, five and a quarter budget. That would leave me a little uncomfortable. So if you could check with that and then we'll work on the referendum language. Greg?
Yeah, again, I, I think this is an excellent, excellent talking point piece. It's one page, it's simple, it really tells the story. I just would add a couple things, I, at least a couple questions. On personnel and salaries, salaries and benefits, on the personnel costs, I think that should be one line, and I'll tell you why. Not only are the salaries, almost all of that salary is bargained for through union contracts, but so are the benefits. So this isn't something where we're, you know, having great largesse on that. Uh, where, this is what it is. And I, I think when people see that salary and benefits that are bargained for are 72% of the budget, and it kinda makes you, it kinda takes your, your oppositional breath away when you realize that there's not a lot we can do about that. It is what it is. So just a thought. The, the second point I would make is, is there any way in the budget walk to have something that makes, draws attention to the fact that the 340 and the 430 are monies that are being subtracted? I know you say less private tuition, less grant, but somebody reading across might just, their eyes might trick them into thinking those are additions, not subtractions. Can we put parons around them or something?
Yep, yep.
And then finally, at the bottom in the what you need to know, it would be really nice if we could get in that line you said that was really good, that the more AgSTEM students we bring in, the more impact tuition has to reduce our budget. Unless that's just not, literally not true, because it's a, the cost, I don't think the costs go up at the same rate that the tuition comes in. So I think, I think you could probably get away with putting that in there. It would be an honest observation. And it might make people say, oh yeah, I get it. This, this, these increases are gonna go down. We're not gonna have the same bump in the future because the AgSTEM tuition increases and increases faster than the costs. The only problem is you might need a page of footnotes on the back of this, but-
Yeah, yeah, that's, it, it's tempting, uh, it's, great comments, by the way, great comments, thank you. But it is tempting to, you know, where do you stop? And I think we need to-
Yes.
We need to think about keeping this and, you know, and there was great discussion around even some of the smallest words on this page. But just, just trying to keep it as simple as, as possible and not get too in the weeds with, with some of this stuff. And so to that end, there is going to be a, a page two to this that is really aimed expressly at the finance managers of the three towns that get into the nuts and bolts of what was, what was the pro rata share, share by town last year compared to this year? Because that ultimately drives the increase that the towns see. And those numbers change from year to year, and they did this year. And then doing this walk again and splitting it down by, by the towns. But that, that can get easily confusing. Um, and that's why it's being put on a separate page and that's why it's really being aimed at, 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 at town finance folks. Not to say it isn't available to the public, it, it, it could be. And, and anybody wants to see that walk can see that walk. But trying to do that all here, it's, it, uh, it was a mess. It was a mess and it was getting some of us who were, consider ourselves pretty fluent with the numbers all wrapped around the axle, so. Stephanie?
Um, a minor comment about what Greg was saying. I, I see what you're saying about the salaries and benefits, but I might consider still keeping those separate just because they're different object codes and it's a little easier to follow if you have the actual, like, um, budget with you. I don't know, I, I think that might, to me, that would be a little confusing to wrap them all into one because I like seeing the breakdown individually between something we can't control, like benefits. I don't know, I mean, maybe that's at odds, but-
Okay.
I can see why maybe it was split up like that.
Alan?
Well, I think, um, this is, is to me halfway between two things. You can add more editorializing and more, um, marketing to this and send it out before the, um, what's it called? The gag date, the, what are the, the quiet period?
Quiet period.
And then you can actually send a version out of this with just a few things stripped out during the quiet period. Um, in other words, right here is all very hard facts and figures, except you need to take things out like science labs and desperate need of renovation, a couple of things like that. And this can go out towards the end because it really is just factual.
Yeah.
And I think you can, you can, um, you can do two versions, one with a lot of sell to it before we're not allowed to, and then a clean version afterwards.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a good point. So we can, it could be multi-purpose for sure. But we want to just make sure that everybody, for example, if we left this with the press and they wrote an article around our budget based on these facts, that they would get, we would get an accurate portrayal of our situation. So I think we'll keep refining it. Jim?
Yeah, just a question and a comment. I would, I agree with Stephanie, I would keep the benefits separated. I think it's just, it's just more honest, that people can see what it is. And when you say tuition goes, tuition revenue goes directly to towns, that's the 340, 116?
That's the 770. The 340 plus the 430.
Right.
Goes directly to the towns. So, and the point here, right, is we want to, we should rightly so, take credit for the revenue that's being generated by the decisions being made by the board. Julie?
Yeah, just a couple points. Under the budget walk section, should the word private be removed if in fact the Sherman tuition comes into that bucket, the 340, 116?
Yes.
And to your most recent point, Bridgewater worked really, 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 really hard to get the tuition in program. So we would love to know, you know, just the breakout between what the Sherman number is and what the general tuition in number is. Not that it needs to be on here, but that would be important talking point.
I would suggest we put that on page two.
Okay.
We'd do the breakdown of that on page two.
Okay.
Because I think the ag needs to be broke down as well by tuition and state grant money, you know, to see that fidelity.
Yep.
As well as the tuition in, because we've got, you break that apart, it's really district to district, which is Sherman, and then the true tuition in.
Right.
Which was our...
Right.
Program.
Right.
Right?
Also, Washington may be different, I'm not sure, but Bridgewater doesn't really have a finance manager. We have a board of volunteers.
Okay.
And I would say, these hard numbers really need to go to the first selectmen and the board of selectmen, because they deal with it. And they're going to be the voice to the public, much more than the volunteer finance board. And also, I mean, one of the number one questions someone's going to ask is, you know, how will this impact my taxes? Will it impact it on the 5% rate or the 1.7, based on when the money comes in and so forth? That's going to be your first question that the public's going to want to know.
I think the answer to that question is, you need to ask your town government. Seriously.
Well, right, but we should, we should all know what that answer is. And hopefully, the town governments can do it the same way.
Well, let's be really clear about this, right? The one point, the tuitioning in money, since it goes to the towns, how they bookkeep it, how they account for it, how they want to think about it in their heads is their issue and their concern. But we're delivering that money to the town. So in terms of region 12's impact on the respective budgets, it's a net, it's a net equation.
Can I say something? Michelle's making the face that...
You're going to say something as, I think you're going to say something as a board member.
As both, because I had to learn about this as both. This has been said the entire time I was on the Board of Education. And it was last year that suddenly someone said, hey, look, we get a check back from the Board of Ed every year, and it's nowhere near this amount, so it doesn't go directly to towns. So Michelle and I had a conversation, because I think she was treasurer at that point last year. And I said, hey, what's going on here? And then we had some jokes, because I couldn't tell the difference between net and gross. Remember that conversation? So the idea is, yeah, see? See, my stupidity is memorable. Keeps us in notches in our history. So, but that's what we have to clarify, is that we don't, when we say it goes back to the towns, it really, literally never does. And therefore, the people actually are paying the 1.7, because the money that supposedly goes to the towns is actually offset, it actually offsets the gross budget. So in other words, when we have this big number, the big 22953 number, the towns never really billed for that, because the money that is returned to the towns, that never is returned to the towns, is taken away from that before the bill comes. Does that make sense?
Oh, they get a check.
Does that make sense? So, in other words, if, let's try to make it real simple. If I, if it's going to cost the town $100, that's what they're signing up for, right? And they write a check, 12 checks a year for 1/12 of that amount of money, they don't actually pay that 100, because there is this tuition in revenue, which doesn't go back to the towns. It's not like they pay $100 and then get $5 back. They end up, the expenses are calculated because of that extra $5, and they end up paying $95. And that's what I'm trying to say. In other words, it's not as if the taxpayers are ever going to have to pay the full amount and then get money back, because it never happens. They just don't actually pay the full amount. They pay the full amount with that money that doesn't go back, subtracted from it first. And that's why, as complicated as this may seem, if we avoid the, directly going back to the towns' language, and actually feel that we are safe to say to the towns, your out-of-pocket taxpayer expense is the 1.7 amount, we're safe doing that. We don't have to say 5.24, and you're getting this money back, because that doesn't really happen anyway. Did I tell it right, Nicole?
Excuse me, haven't we cut checks to the towns every year?
Yeah, it's some of...
But it doesn't match up, it never has.
It's a far smaller number. It's a real, it's after the surplus is taken care of with the 1% fund and blah, 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 blah.
That's, yeah, those checks that are going back are budget surplus items. Not necessarily a round trip of, here's the tuition check, and now I'm going to give it back to you.
Just a point of, just to say, I asked Bob about this a whole bunch of times, and he told me that it just didn't make any sense to raise up the budget and then take all the tuition money and then give it back. So he just sort of built it in somehow. And it made it very difficult to understand what the revenue was and how it all worked.
The referendum, and I want to hear from Nicole, certainly. But the referendum itself has to be the gross budget amount. Because contractually, all of that revenue can go away tomorrow, in theory, right? Because we don't have a hard contractual obligation, right, for anybody to show up in September. Right? So we have to, we have to, we have to get a referendum on the gross. Just like when we did the AgSTEM program. We had to get a referendum on the gross amount, assuming Connecticut would disappear. Even though the odds of that were slim to none, right? We still had to do that. It's the same thing here. So, yeah, the words, we got to, if we could tune the words to make it clearer, better, but we got to keep it as simple as possible. It's basically, because the question we want to avoid is, well, if that's the case, why are you asking me for the big money? You know, and we had that with Ag, right? People were saying, well, why do you have to go to referendum for the big amount? Why don't you just go for the lower amount? I don't, you know, as if we were trying to build a nest egg, which we know we can't. So that's what we're trying to avoid here. So if there's better language, we're all open for suggestions. Who had, Greg? Did you have your hand up, or did some?
Yeah, I don't know that I have better language.
Well, can I, I'm sorry, since you didn't have your hand up.
I did, actually.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
I thought I, okay, I thought it was Nicole. Go ahead.
No, I don't know if I have better language for you on that. But the one thing I can say is, is that the thing that makes this so complex is that we have to go to referendum on 5.24%, 22,900,000, because that's what we have to collect to run the school system. The fact that tuition will be, come back, and it will offset that, so the towns don't have to collect that, is important. But the other thing I want to say, and the thing that I think is critical, is when we advertise this thing, not for nothing, the town of Roxbury spent the last two years with $500,000 and $600,000 increases, even though the budget was roughly flat in those years, because of the number of students allocated to Roxbury. This year, they're going to have a $95,000 cut, even with a 5-point-whatever-percent budget. And I think that ought to be advertised heavily in Roxbury, because if people in Roxbury don't want to see their taxes go down, I'm sure that they'd have something to say about that. And I think that's something you have to do. Maybe you don't advertise it quite so much if the towns are going up.
That will show itself quite clearly in the page two of this. When you, when you bring the proration in and you look at a year-over-year compare with everything factored in, that'll, that'll jump out very cleanly. And then I do agree that each, within each town, you've got to figure out, then how do I strip out what's relevant in my community and talk to our residents? Because Bridgewater's going to have a very different story, and Washington will have a different story. And, you know, but the same points still apply, right? Nicole, we have to switch the tape. So we're going to take a short recess for maybe five or so minutes. But Nicole, before we do, did you have something you wanted to add about this?
Just to the conversation about whether the towns get a check returned or not?
Mike? Sorry. Okay, doesn't sound...
It's about, if you look at what happened last year, it's about 50/50. 340,000 was offset from the bills, and 350,000 was returned. And only a small piece of that was surplus, most of it was tuition. So you get some on either end.
Thank you. All right, so let's take a recess. 9, what, 10? 9, all right, 9:05.
I just want to move a little bit of capital things out.
We're back in session. So at this point, Stephanie will lead us through. But it's, I think in, depending upon how conversation goes, if, to the extent that there's a reduction in the budget or changes in the budget, you know, specifically questions, great, Megan wants, you know, we need to talk specifics. But if there's a general, we'd like to see the budget reduced by a certain percentage or a target. Megan's preference would be to be tasked with a number, so that she can go back and work with our staff, and then come back to us and tell us how, that she's been able to solve for that number. As opposed to us walking a list and making a lot of probably tactical decisions about perhaps line items in the budget. But if there is something, for example, very large in the budget that specifically the board wants to talk about, like, I don't think we should be doing X, or I think we should be doing Y, I believe that's what we should be debating tonight. So, I get that? Yep. Okay. All right, so with that, Stephanie, you want to, you could just take us through the budget, however you want to do this, and...
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'll ask you now, in my mind, and kind of how I've been reviewing the budget and breaking it down over the past, you know, even just going through the budget workshops, was kind of keeping Ag and the general budget separate. Granted, in here, the 700 line is what includes Ag. So, you know, in the past, in years past, we've gone through each object code, and we've kind of gone through the nitty-gritty, which is everything you find in Exhibit A. I'm kind of disinclined to do that this year, but if that's too different, or if it doesn't make sense, and we don't want to break out the general budget from the Ag budget conversation, we don't have to do that either. So unless, go ahead, Michelle.
Well, I just got a comment on that.
Okay. Yeah.
Because I'm usually one of those line item, like, my lines. And I would just, I would just like to say that I did do that, because that's just my nature, and that's what I do. And I had a whole list of questions for Megan and Nicole, because I was trying to square it all up. And I, I don't know that that would be such a useful exercise this year, because of the change in the format. So I had a whole bunch of, like, what is this? And where is this? And where is that recorded? And it just looks very different, because not only are we bringing on agri-science, and they're like, oh, electricity for agri-science, that makes sense, but also just the way some things are being recorded, whether it's substitutes that were in a different play, you know, so it's getting, by going to the new format, I'm not sure that that would be as useful as an exercise.
Okay, yeah, I felt like it was kind of weedy, but, no, and so did I. I mean, that's how we went through it, but it feels weedy to me. And I'm not opposed to it, again, because that's how we're comfortable doing it, but...
Almost all of the big stuff is pulled out.
Right.
So there aren't a lot of changes in all the little items.
Okay, so I'll kind of dive in the way I kind of envisioned doing it. And then if we need to go back, or if we need to go into the exhibits, we can do that. We, you know, we can dive in. And so, really nice to have this front sheet, because this is kind of what I was going to start talking about. And I'm glad that it's been separated out and highlighted to everyone that the general budget itself is essentially flat. And again, there are certain components of the general budget that we really don't have any control over. Things like benefits that were up a little, about 6%, not as big as last year's increase, which was a little over 18%. There are salaries, you know, that's contractual. There were step increases. And the other kind of big issue was in the buildings or the property services. But I think there's property and program changes, that was in the 700s, excluding Ag-science. So if you guys want to pop to page two on the budget, this breaks down by object code. This is what we're used to seeing. We're not used to seeing, I think, this nice summary page. But it kind of highlights which areas have the increases, which areas have the bigger decreases. And if we, I think, just kind of go over the summary page on each of the object codes, it gives a pretty good explanation of what's happening. And if we want to delve deeper, again, that's, it gets a little weedy, and I guess we can just see where the conversation goes on whether we want to talk about individual line items. Or again, like Megan's hoping that we do, is kind of come to an overall consensus of an actual budget percentage. So if anyone has questions or has highlighted anything in these particular object codes, I guess just raise your hand there. Sorry, go ahead.
I'll start with very high level. When I look at salaries...
Yep. This is in the 100 code, so everyone can follow.
Question, you know, so are we adding, are we adding teachers? Not putting agri-science to the side? Are we adding teachers?
No, we're not.
Right, okay.
There's a decrease of a 2.1 FTE. And I think we've, in the 900 series and the program changes, we'll see where we've shifted, but not...
No, I recall, it was, I think, a couple powers, you know, left to right. But is it fair to say that most all of the 1.18% increase on the salary lines is all contractual obligations?
Yes.
Is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
Okay. And on the benefits line?
And the 200 series?
Yes. Would that also be fair to say that the 6-plus percent increase is all, well, I mean, we have contractual obligations to provide our employees with benefits.
That's in our medical, dental, life and disability. That's all part of that. And that's, we really don't have control over what happens year to year. If you remember last year, when we had that huge bump.
Right.
That's, I mean, that's something that, you know, happens out in our personal lives. It's not something that we can negotiate and add. And if you remember, Bob looked at, he tried negotiating, went to a couple different insurance companies, and we were kind of at the best of where we were at. So really, this is just a fortune, it's fortunate for us. The increase wasn't as large as it was last year.
So is 6%, is there anything extraordinary like last year, where we had a spike in the premiums in this year's budget? Or is it just in year-over-year inflation? Year-over-year?
Can I add something to that?
Mm-hmm.
If you look at the salary increase of 1.18%, that means we have fewer people employed. Because no bargaining unit that we have has that small an increase year-over-year. So that means you've got fewer people making up that number, which brings down the size of the increase. And my guess is, because you have fewer people being employed for salaries, you've got fewer people receiving benefits. So your benefits probably represent an inflationary increase. Or possibly, is it all inflation, or some of it maybe due to just changes in the rate structure? Could be. But we have a couple of unions that are transitioning over to a higher deductible in this coming year. But we have a couple of unions that are transitioning over to, to a higher deductible, um, in this coming year. So my guess is that this, this is not due to higher cost benefits in, in theory, because we're actually paying less for our benefits. But those are small unions, so.
I'll just, some of those are, um, due to just like the rate increases. So I think if I'm following you right, like that was part of your question, like the Medicare and all that, you know, their particular individual rates were increased.
Yeah. And the pri, and, and the rate that the insurance company is charging us for, for any individual is up higher than the number. The number of individuals is dropping, so the rate's higher.
Oh, Nicole. Yeah, Nicole?
There's also some volatility in that line because existing employees will come on or go off of benefits. So that 6.19 isn't a true, that was our increase in premium. That was the fluctuation in the line item depending on, we, even though we have the same number of employees, this year maybe 90 employees needed benefits because they had a change in personal circumstances and last year only 83 needed them. So there's a lot of things that go into that increase, but from an insurance perspective, it was a rate increase. There was nothing extraordinary that happened with our claims that drove us up in an unnatural way.
Right.
So is 6%, is 6%? Thank you. Is 6% something, I don't know what it was, you might know, year, the, well, last year was an, was an anomaly, but is 6% normal?
Yeah.
And we, we, so we could pretty much expect that year-over-year? Yeah?
I think it's pretty close to average. I mean, I don't know exactly what that, like, average rate is, but. I, I even, Bob was kind of expecting that, like before, when we had those conversations in the earlier part of the year. So, and, and I hope this doesn't feel like we're speeding through, but again, that, that, those 100 and 200 lines, there's not a whole lot of flexibility there. And those are two of the main drivers of the general budget. So, um, main drivers of the flat general.
Well, a chunk of, a chunk of the budget of the, the general budget, also if I had, what, 434,000 dollars of, uh, facility improvements? I think you had highlighted. Again, non, we haven't gotten to ag, we'll keep, we'll just keep putting that to the side because I do think we should talk about that. But in that 434,000, uh, have, um, I assume that list came from endorsed by the facilities committee, um, finance committee, et cetera? I mean, is that worth walking through that list to make sure everybody knows what's on it? Or does everybody know what's on it and, and everyone's good with it?
Wait, can.
Alan?
Well, I had a question about it because, um, you know, I'm, I'm sure that everybody knows, we're, we're kind of jumping. He wants to jump us all the way to the fives.
Well, I kind of do.
I mean, to the sevens. So I'm happy to jump to the sevens and then I want to go back to the fives later, but.
Yeah, I lost you just for a second.
I'll, I'll reserve my question to the.
Okay.
For your time, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, you just lost me for a second too. I was like, wait, where? Yeah, we'll get there. We'll get there.
Try to move us.
Okay, so this is where I think maybe it would help to, um, go into a little bit of that exhibit. But, so in the 300s, um, which is purchase, purchase professional and technical services, um, you can go down that very far right column of the percentage change and see where the drivers are. Computer tech support and Niask was one of the, well, is the largest in that, in this category. Megan, do you want to explain the, what that driver is there? The, what that line item goes? I mean, we can pull it down and I think it's on page, I think, five. No, sorry, page four, I think, in the exhibit. It's page, page seven is the summary, but if we go to Exhibit A, page four of 13, you can pull up that line item, 325.
Network management. So, second. Okay. She's moving me over to that one. Sorry, I was looking at the overview page. So taking a look at, um, things that we have as far as what is driving our cost, I think you can see some of it is just increases with our services. You have contracts that we have to honor and they tend to increase. So, um, you'll see some of the line items that are, um, out there, you know, pupil personnel. We have to make contracts for some of the services for some of our students and you'll see the increases in that, um, in the tune of $21,000. So some of them are just as far as, as we contract and as those, uh, contracts play out, we have to make certain we're honoring the obligations and fulfilling the needs, uh, for the students as they are laid out in, be it IEPs or in, even as you look at our athletics that fall within this line. Officials, I know Bob moved us over to a service for officials because it was a struggle in order for us to secure officials for our games. So he moved us to a service to make certain that we can continue to play our games and have the appropriate people keeping us safe.
Nicole, you want to, yeah.
If you know it, go ahead.
The DEW should actually be DW for district-wide, but it's a mistake in the Tyler system that we have to get corrected. But the uptick in that is because we signed on to a few more outside support contracts to replace the fact that we no longer, um, have the same director of technology in place. So instead of rehiring to fill that position, we outsourced some of, um, the support that we need for the servers, firewall, backups. So that's why that number went up.
Yeah, but our, our, just to be clear, our, was, that was being done by a director previously?
Some of them.
Or was it just not getting done?
Uh, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. Well, for example, this is where our help with Power School is coming from?
Power School comes from this, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, as well as our firewall, um, backup service.
So. I'll say, I'll try to say this differently.
Wait, hold on. Sorry.
It sounds like in the past, because of the problems specifically with Power School as an example, that we were perhaps underspending in these areas. And, and, and now, you know, which is what led us to some of the challenges that you're facing. Is that true?
I, I would say that's an accurate statement.
Okay.
I'd also say that just where we pick up in some of these lines, um, we've decreased in other lines. So, I mean, even though it seems, maybe we pick up support here, but where we've decreased in salary, you know, those things kind of offset each other. So just, you know, to keep that in mind.
We get to a net zero, so somewhere along the way, there's got to be a couple of wins.
I just want to say it out there, so if someone sees a 52% increase, again, we might be looking for more support in some areas where we've saved somewhere else. But just so we understand where that percentage change is coming from is why I wanted to dive in.
I do want to say, and Nicole, when she was looking at some of the budgeting, she really was also looking at where some of the overspend was happening and making certain that she was accounting for things that we have coming up. For example, you know, we know we have legal services. We know we're going into additional contracts, you know, with the teachers' union next year. And so to make certain that we are budgeting appropriately, so that also caused some of the shifts.
Sorry, let me go to Greg first before you, Alan, because he's been waiting.
Some of these numbers go up a little bit, some of them go down a little bit, but there are four drivers here in this category. One of them is outside hired pupil services, uh, which is basically 21,000, almost $22,000 increase. Your network and computer district-wide services, which together are about 22,000. And your legal services, which are about a $17,000 increase. I mean, those are your drivers. Take, take those out and you have a flat, slightly down, or close to, close to flat budget. Those are your drivers and we know, we know why, we know why those are, are higher. So I don't think there's anything, I mean, I hate to say it, but there's nothing to see here.
You said it, not me, so. But Alan?
Uh, yeah, I was about to say, the, the flip side of what Anthony said was something that there's a small increase here, but we're saving an entire salary. I just had a question because of the things that I only noticed when we're in budget season, is we have a mail courier?
Yes.
What? Between buildings or?
No, between all three towns. So, uh, we have somebody who comes out and he has to deliver it. So our inter-office mail is not just.
Oh, that's what I mean, but I mean, between, as I said, between schools and different towns. So somebody gets, is, there's a human being who gets in a car and brings in-office memos? And it only costs that much or is that a stipend to somebody else who's already?
Stipend.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's not a sole hire of just career. All right, so if everyone's okay, we'll move on to the 400 series, um, purchase property services. So this includes things like, um, our trash removal, um, copier repair maintenance, water sewer services, pool maintenance, security technology. Again, things that we, we have to provide, things we have to do. The largest increase here is for sewer services.
Lambers.
Yeah, and again, we need to do that. We can, we can dive, we can dive into that. Anyone, anyone want to wade? Ha ha.
We need a little.
Again, there's a $9,000 increase in this entire category and 10,000 of it can be attributed to sewer, 10,007 to sewer services support agri-science. And $500 of it to middle, high school sewer services. Bottom line is, the rest of it's down.
Right.
By a, by a little, so nothing to see here.
All right. So it sounds like we, we'd like to move on to the 500 series.
Yes, please.
Okay. And this is where you had a question, right, Anthony, in the 500s? Is that where we were?
He had sevens, I had fives, he had sevens.
Or am I wrong about that? Other purchase services?
I have a five question.
Mm-hmm.
So fives have gone down nicely. Is that just the way it goes as far as the, the big chunk is coming out of, uh, 561, 563 and 564? Because we simply have not needed, um, placement for other, uh, other public schools or, or private placements for particular kids in need? Or have we done something programmatic? We just, we're just lucky?
A, a little bit of everything. A credit to Ally and her team for making certain that we provide the services, but we always look at what is the needs of the students and, um, depending on meeting the needs that are, um, in our student population. So right now, we don't have a need.
That's good.
Additionally, that, the nice thing is also notice our tuition to nano walk starts to really go down.
Oh, right, 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 yes, that's a good one too, yeah.
Nicole?
I just want to make a comment about this section and I apologize, there's an error in it.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
It's actually a negative 17.8% decrease. The 18, 19 budget line is wrong. The total should be 2,615,024. It's right in other parts of the presentation, but it's wrong on this sheet.
So the decrease is larger than, yeah.
It's the 18, 19 budget numbers that are off.
But only on this exhibit?
Only on this page.
Got it. Um, so wait, so you can, can you just say that overall number again so we can write it down? So it's really 17 what?
It's negative 17.8%.
Point eight, okay.
In the 18, 19 budget, column should be 2,615,024.
2,615, 24? Okay. Need a pen?
No, I've got 60.
This is negative 17%.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Nothing to see there.
Yeah. So, uh, 600, which is supplies. Oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
What's the, what's the huge increase in the middle school field trip? The music thing? Went from like 1,000 to 8,000? I was just curious.
No, they, they were really looking to put some emphasis on our middle school to inspire our middle school students to continue in the arts. Um, this is one of our efforts, we're doing so much with STEM push and everything, um, to do something for our middle school field trip, which is going to take them, um, I, I, I believe it's a trip out of state and it is one in which we'd like to pay for the students to attend that, so.
Alan?
Alan?
Oh, we're in the 600s, aren't we?
Uh, we can be now.
Oops, sorry, jumping ahead. What's the big drop in, um, English and language arts supplies in Booth and, uh, Burnham?
And actually in Washington as well.
A little, it's a little drop there, but a huge.
They're looking for a different program. Um, what had happened was last year, we started foundations, which is a phonics-based program in the early grade levels. Once we bought the teacher's manuals, you don't have to rebuy it, so it's, since the program is in place now.
Okay.
So you see there's a larger increase just in textbooks and subscriptions as here with declining enrollment. And I think also just the cycle that we were in, we didn't need to purchase more of those. Again, the drivers here are utilities, electricity, gas. Go ahead, Alan.
Yeah, and so I have utilities question. I'm noticing, um, on page 10 or 13, for some reason, um, fuel oil is going up in two elementary schools and down in WPS and in the middle high school. Is there some reason why fuel oil is going down there? Doesn't it always go up? It's the very bottom of 10 and 13.
Yeah, um.
Washington special.
It's special. They like it colder there.
Yeah, I wonder.
I can't speak to that right now. I can't, we can get back to you with that answer.
All right, this is interesting. I thought, great, because whatever they're doing, the other ones should do.
Oh, um, Nicole, I'm gonna, can you steal the microphone?
Those accounts were just trued up from, from just doing work to try to true the accounts up so that we could keep our budget numbers lower. There was a lot of excess in those accounts in prior years, so we spoke with Don and trued them up to what the actual spending in those accounts is plus an increase for the year.
It's not necessarily that we're consuming less.
No, we're not consuming less.
Fortunately.
Yeah, right. Okay, so getting more interesting, um, in the 700 series, property cost and program changes, um, which is, we've focused here many times in years past. We'll have to, I think, well, we should take a look at some of the back, um, the back pages here. Maybe let's split it up the, okay, so we can go for, um, let's do property costs first. Those are going to be more of our, um, our capital improvement costs for both the elementary, what we lease and what we own. And the capital facilities costs are one of our largest increases. Let's take a look at, let's see, which page is that? 700.
12.
Yeah, are we on at 12 already? Yep. Oh, sorry, give me one sec. 730.
Can I add something while you're looking?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I did the same analysis here and everything that, the entire increase here is driven by agri-science, the fact we added a program, the capital tech, the capital facilities budget. And the other driver of the addition is, um, the agri-science bonding, although the total loan principal bonding comes down. So in actuality, that's kind of flat there when you look at those numbers together. But the primary thing really is capital improvements that are necessary and the ag-science program, which is offset by tuition.
Right, well, so part of that is like 800, 900 series. But yes, I, I think maybe we should look at the, the capital facilities just because it's the largest driver there in that 734 series. But yeah, I think you called it, Jen, is page 12. So maybe if we could speak a little bit more to, um, the drivers at each of the schools and the facilities and the maintenance there. Michelle?
Well, I, page 13 is actually, I think, pretty helpful.
Fells it out, yeah.
Where it outlines all the, the big drivers. And I just wanted to say that if you look at the capital facilities, the 434, which I think is what.
That's where I was.
Yep, that's what Anthony was talking about. Yep, that's what Anthony was talking about.
I didn't make this stuff up.
I just wanted to point out that at the Finance Committee meetings, when Don presented his request to us, he was over, I think, 900,000.
Yeah.
So, some of that was work that had already been completed, some of that were estimates that came back, but some of that were things that were cut, and we all know that we have aging buildings. So, I, Don and Megan and Nicole have done a lot of work already bringing it down to the 434, so I just wanted to point that out, that this is, this is, they're asking for what they feel has to be done. It's either security or.
Oil tanks.
Yeah. Like, stuff that we really don't have a lot of say over. The one, I did have a question, though, for Nicole, which was, what are capital reserve account balances?
The account balance as of the end of February was 928,000. There are few jobs being finished, though, that will also go against that in this budget year. Don estimates another 28,000 will need to come out of that for things he has in progress, so you're looking at about 897 when we close the year.
Thank you.
Alan?
Sorry.
That's good.
Yeah, so that was my question when I saw this, is, I don't think I would argue that any of these things are dispensable, but I was concerned, since it's all capital, and obviously, even though they're called capital, there are certain things like painting, which are not allowed, but a lot of these can be handled by the, when you say capital reserve, you mean the 1% fund? By either the Capital Reserve Fund or by the elementary school, what we call the lease fund, which is a similar $100,000 fund. Is there any reason why we can't take some of this out of our percentage increase to make this more pleasant and utilize the reserve fund, which is really what it's for, for things that we don't do every, every year, or even every 20 years, like replace oil tanks, or install card access systems, or things like that? Can you tell me why that wasn't part of the plan?
Greg?
Go ahead.
Because I got news for you, that fund's going to take a whooping over the next several years. We can't just take money out of it now. We've got extraordinary capital expenses. This district made a choice. It decided it would keep three elementary schools and a middle high school, and those buildings are old, the high school is approaching 50 years. I mean, there's a lot of things here, and I know those folks love swimming in the pool, but that pool has a useful life of 50 years and is 49 years old. So, guess what? We, if we start hitting that 1% fund, there won't be a 1% fund to cover the costs of things that are coming down the pipe that you haven't even seen yet, because the capital expenses are just going to rise year after year, because it's now time to pay for what we've been enjoying for 50 years.
Michelle?
I, I was on the same page with Alan. I feel that we could probably, that we should fund some of this capital, some of these capital projects out of the capital reserve. I wouldn't, I wouldn't advocate moving too much into that, because that is our emergency fund, and, but I think, Greg, for planning purposes, I think it would be better to think of the capital reserve as a emergency fund to do things throughout the year that could come up, but to actually do some long-range planning and capital planning for things that we know are coming up. So, I think there's, I think there is room, with a balance of 897,000, I think there's room to do some of this work. I was going to suggest we move one or two of the oil tanks. We have to get used to budgeting in the operating for capital projects, because we have buildings to take care of, but this is an extraordinary year, especially with those two oil tanks, and I would be in favor of moving one or two of them over.
So, you mean, Alan?
And there's also the Elementary School Fund. How much is in that? Because some of these, that's meant to be used, you know, every year, so that we don't get, we don't get behind on things.
Nicole?
So, the budget funds $100,000 into that account, so you could transfer some of these items to the elementary schools against that $100,000 that's funded, but it's spent down.
Oh, so it's already spent down for the, there's nothing in it from last year?
There's a, currently a balance, but Don's still working through some things. The balance in it right now is 57,000. He's still working through some projects. We never run it all the way down, but.
But it's pretty much allocated to what you're saying, then? Okay.
Or it gets, it gets used every year.
Greg?
Well, I can tell you that we're going to be coming to you very shortly to ask you to spend money to redo the tennis courts. We need to install pre-tensioned concrete tennis courts. That's $280,000, okay? So, when you start spending down the 1% fund, what you're going to find out, it's time we started paying the pain now in the annual budget, because if, if, if we put a million dollars in every year for the next 20 years, I'm going to come up with another $20 million of cost to run these schools. I mean, that's just the nature of it. We have antique buildings, and we are going to have to pay through the nose to continue to maintain them. All of the walls on this building need to be replaced. All of the windows on this building need to be replaced. Those two costs is 2.5 million dollars, or, I'm sorry, $1,750,000. You've got stuff like that that goes, it's ongoing expenses. We need to convert, all of this building is going to have the interior, it's got to be, you're going to have to be replacing all the carpets in here, all the lights, all of the lights in every school in this district have to be replaced with more energy-efficient ones. They're going to be capital expenditures in order to continue to operate these buildings at a reasonable cost and maintain them, and we do not want to start invading that fund, because you've got $800,000 in it, and I need several million to get us where we probably need to be over the next couple of years. So, I'm just telling you, you invade that at your peril, because you're going to find in the future, when the pool breaks and we have to redo something or abandon it, there's going to be a strong consensus in the community that it be filled with concrete, and we put an end to it. And if you take this fund and deplete it, then you're not going to be swimming in that pool in a couple of years. I'm just telling you, that's the nature of it. You should come to a Facilities Committee meeting, your hair will stand up.
So, we asked the board, we asked the Facilities Director to put together a long-range capital plan, just to be able to kind of bound this conversation and take it into, you know, make it real, right? So, what does that capital plan look like? I mean, like, if you look at the next three years, what's the bottom-line number? And if you look out three-plus years, what's the bottom-line number?
Do you mean the overall proposal that he originally?
No, no, I'm talking about the list of, the list of identified projects that Don put together for the next, you know, by, I think, one to three years, and then out past that. I think while Megan is searching for that, I think the answer's going to be, it's a big number.
I mean, just this year's, again.
It's a very, it's a very big number, and I feel like if we pull something off this list and say we could take it from the capital fund, there's something that's going to come flooding right back in to take its place. And I think the 1% fund should be thought about as a rainy day fund for stuff that happens that we don't anticipate, or like, for example, if we have to go to referendum for a roof, and we can't get the referendum, but we decide to go and we want to drain the 1% fund to put against the roof, I think we need to preserve our options, would be how I would be thinking about this. And this year, if we, if, if we have the opportunity this year to take a chunk of projects off the list, because next year, we might get hit with another medical premium, and there goes that idea, and then we're going to have to live off the 1% fund to get anything done. So, I'm a little hesitant to just dip into it, because it's there. John?
Could I add to that, too? In future years, as the budgets get leaner and leaner, how much are we going to be able to put into that 1% fund for, for, for an aggregate total? I mean, it's going to be harder and harder to build that fund up, so if we take it unnecessarily away from it, are we going to replenish it?
That's a good point.
All right, Pete?
Go to the public with this budget, explain what we're doing, and if we lose it, then you could go back and look at these other things. If you reduce the budget now, and chances are, first budgets stand the biggest chance of getting defeated, they always do. There's always a shock to some degree, but if we go to the public and explain what we're doing, why we're doing, what the budget represents, we're better off taking a chance with as it is. And then if we do lose it, then we can look up all of these suggestions that people want to do, but I would hate to do, I would hate to make a big reduction now and lose the budget. Now, I think the first budget is the budget you always stand the biggest chance of losing.
But you're not suggesting, though, just to, just to be clear, we're not suggesting that this budget is quote-unquote padded, looking for a soft spot just in case.
Right, no, we don't.
We really need what's on this list.
We have to explain, well, when I talk about going into the towns.
Yeah, I know.
It's so important to get to the people, because if you explain to them properly, most of the time, they'll, they'll agree with you.
Well, I think if you scan the list, you know, you've got the two oil tanks, two, right? Right, two oil tanks, and the badge-reading systems are two, you know, are, it's a big chunk of this budget.
And that's security.
And doesn't sound like we have a lot of flexibility on the, on the tanks.
Right.
And the card-reading systems, you know, is at the top of keeping this place secure.
Two switches that.
Go ahead.
The two switches that are underneath for Chapag Valley School, that is because when the renovation is complete, they have to throw a switch, and we don't think they will talk to each other, so we need the two switches, so that way they can all work together. So, that's an extreme need as well.
And I'll just circle back to Michelle's point, that when we got the initial budget proposal, it was $923,000, a little, just a little over that, and, you know, to have cut it down to less than half, you know, like you said, there's not a whole lot of fat to trim here. The fat's been trimmed, but, and I'd be really reticent to go into any of these individual light items without Don here, and to get a little further explanation on that, so, yeah, again, unless there's, someone wants to dive into this or has further discussion about that, I'm happy to go past that facilities line.
I would, unless there's any further comment, I'd suggest, because it sounds like that we're in agreement.
Yeah, I just wanted to give that larger perspective, that, you know, it is a big number, but it's been cut.
I'm comfortable, yeah. Not now.
No, it's okay. It's, to your plan is, it's a big, it's a big number. It's like almost $8 million. So, again, it's not like we don't have a list of things, and that list, unfortunately for us, grows with each year, it doesn't get smaller, despite our best efforts to try to make it smaller, and Greg, and Don, and company. Alan?
I'd like to move that we approve the superintendent's budget request for the next school year.
Well.
Because we're, I mean, we can't do anything about dues and fees, we're done.
Well, we.
Let's go. This meeting can only go until 10 o'clock.
Second.
Yeah.
In the amount of $22,953,377.
Second.
All right, the motion's been seconded, John?
Is there going to be discussion on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I was calling you. Did you have something to say?
After, after we vote, right?
No, no, the motion's been, the motion's on the floor, so now we're open for discussion on whether or not we want to approve the budget.
Okay.
I thought you wanted the floor.
I do.
Okay, yours.
Okay, so, I'm looking at, even at 1.7%, historically, that number is high. 2018, .12%. 2017, minus .93%. 2016, .26%. 2015, minus .20. 2014, 1.43% increase. 2013, .46%. 2012 was 2.24, I don't know what that started out as. And 2011, 1.10% increase, and 2010 was zero. So, I'm not even certain how we could reduce the 1.70, but I think we should try. And one of the ways that I would propose to do that would be possibly not to hire the full, two full-time ag teachers with only 50 some-odd students. I don't feel it's necessary to have three full-time to begin with, and I know we're trying to build a program and a stellar program at that, but without the tuition money, the revenues, and I can't understand why we can't bump up the first-year enrollment, because at the end of the day, if we're only shooting for 108, we're still down by 12 from the, what, a year, year or two ago, when we, when we promised the public that we would have an enrollment of 140, and I know that we never dreamed that eventually we would have 40 in-district students in the program. We only projected out for 20. Also, from the comments from outside, the board members, the public, that is, we're still top-heavy at 640 some-odd students. We're still way top-heavy with administrative costs, so that might be another area that we could cut.
Pete?
It's easy to make reductions when the public has told you, "Do our reductions." I don't disagree with what John's saying, but I'm not sure there's enough support right now on the board to do that. So, my personal opinion was, I can support some of that, but I think I'd rather wait to see if the first budget doesn't pass. It makes it a lot easier to make reductions than just start off making reductions, that's my personal opinion.
John?
I just actually wanted to ask John to expand, and maybe I'm not understanding, so you're saying that you don't think that we should hire the two ag teachers? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
With the ag programs.
For the first year, do with two rather than three.
So, you're saying to hire two, but not?
Hire one.
Hire one additional one, for, for only 50 students.
Exactly.
Because in a small district, only 50 students is actually a large number. So, when I think of 50 students, that's the entire, that's the entire freshman class.
Right, but.
So, that's not only, I'm just, I'm just saying that 50 students isn't only 50 students, that's a large, am I, am I wrong by saying that? So, you're, it's an entire grade, essentially.
25 students per educator, though. In introductory courses.
But I'm not an expert, and you're not an education expert, so that's why we have our superintendent to be able to direct us in that way, so I trust her judgment, and especially because we are trying to build a program, we would absolutely want to make sure that we have enough staff to support this new program. So, I completely disagree, and do not think that that would be the direction that we should go, because they're not only 50 students, those are 50 additional students, which is essentially one entire grade.
Greg?
I mean, I was going to say that it's, it's difficult, John, to sort of appreciate the trajectory of budgets in this district, and I was one of the people who thought it was a mistake to go into negative budgets, because when you, when you cut a budget by, say, 2%, the next year, you're, you're starting out with a baseline that's 98% of what you had, and so when you keep cutting it, what happens is you artificially depress the budget, and you stop spending money on things like capital improvements, and that's one of the mistakes we made. Also, if you look at the, in the 10 years I've been on the board, this will be the 11th budget, I guess, the, the total increase is about 4.5% over that period of time. In the four years prior to that, it was about 4% to 4.5% a year. So, if you look at 1.7 against the last 14, 15 years, it really comes out to about, that's about 1.52 or something, so it's in line with the last, you know, 15 years, although in most recent years, we, it's, it is above what we'd have, but when we put the AgSTEM program up, we projected a bump, and I think it was bigger than 1.7% in this year. And so, I think that this is not an out-of-line number, especially since the basic budget is flat. I don't have a problem with it. I, would I like it to? Would I like it to be zero? Sure. But it isn't going to be, and we need this budget. And frankly, the budget's going to continue to have increases, I think, in the future, because we have not put the money out for capital expenditures that we needed to do, and now that's catching up with us, so...
I agree. Everything in this budget is needed, and I think I kind of agree with what Pete's saying, that until we ask the public, we shouldn't start moving the funding for things, because we all know that we need that capital reserve. I just wonder if we think there's any value, perception-wise, trying to get that 5.24 under 5. You know, if we moved one oil tank, we could bring it to a 4.9. And does that just read better? Does that sound better? Is it worth moving one item into the capital reserve, you know, a $74,000 oil tank? That would be my only question, but then, if we choose not to, I completely support going 100% with all of this, because I know we need it all.
John?
I just wanted to...
It's fine.
Thinking back to John again, and when you were reading off all of the budgets over the last 10 years or so, you know, and there've been times where I've kind of scratched my head when we've had a decreased budget and it's still failed, and yet, at the same time, we don't ask a lot. Each year, when we present a budget, we're not... We don't ask for 5%. And so, I guess for me, the question is, is that at what point do we, as taxpayers and board members, think it's worth investing a little bit once in a while in the district? Let me finish. Because, in all fairness, we don't really stretch and ask a lot traditionally. So, once every 10 years, I don't think is really... I don't think that that's asking a lot. And I think that, as board members, we should be investing in that.
I agree.
John?
No, I agree. I mean, it's... You know, the public is going to look at the 5.25, but if we show, you know, if we show that we can be a little bit more responsible, you know, after... And this is after we're banking on state grants, which are totally unpredictable. They haven't even appropriated the money this year yet for the state grant per student. And I could see if our population was constant over those 10 years, but it declined every each year. So, the public, you know, is concerned about the cost for a pupil. That's the bottom line.
Sorry. Do you mind if I reply? Can I? Sorry. Which is why, with the decline, I think that superintendents have always been very mindful about the kind of budget that they present, hence why there have been zero budgets, decreased budgets, and very small increases. So, I think that that's always been in the forefront, moving forward. And I think, as a board member, John, you know, you yourself said, looking at the budget, you see the need. So, I'm hoping, as a Washington rep, that you're going out to those people who are talking about the budget and saying, hey, you know what? They don't ask this much. These are the reasons why we need it. It's not like if we go back next year and ask for 5.24%, I could say, oof, but I think it's reasonable, and I think that it's important that we, as board members, stand behind it. So, when we are talking to our residents and our taxpayers, I hope you're doing that. I hope you're encouraging people to vote yes, for the right reasons.
Good.
I just... To draw everybody's attention to page 19, just because, John, you did bring up per-pupil expenditure. When we do add in the additional students, that will be tuitioned, and our per-pupil expenditure actually drops for next year by $1,400.
That is huge. Definitely worth mentioning.
It is. Okay. Julie?
Just two quick questions. Is the D-Bold money factored in at all?
No.
Okay.
No.
And secondly, for the in-district students that are part of AgSTEM, do we get any state funding for them?
The state grant.
So, how much less do we get for our own kids than we do from the sending towns' kids?
Sending towns send an additional... It's 68.23 per student.
So, we get... If you look at it, the negative side, we get penalized 68.23 per student if we accept the in-district students versus the out-of-district students?
Not necessarily.
To the extent that your capacity constraints... So, if you have unlimited capacity, then it doesn't matter, right? How many you bring in. So, when we get to the point where we hit our capacity, and we're saying we can only accept one more student, and we decide to take a Region 12 over a sending town, then it's an economic impact. But until you get to that point, it doesn't matter. So, it's not like any of these... The acceptances have been... Were wait-listed because we have a capacity problem. That was NanoLog's problem.
So, wait, you're saying that right now, the in-district kids, we get the same amount of money for the Chapag kids as we do for all the other kids?
Grant money from the state.
Grant money from the state.
$4,200 right now.
But we lose out on what the sending town sends us.
Right.
Which is the 68...
Correct.
All right.
Right.
But there's another way to look at that, if you excuse me for a second.
Go ahead, Alan.
But we actually are gaining that, because we would have to pay that to NanoLog if we sent our kids there. So, that's a way to offset it.
Yes, this is true, but if we average, and I think it's something like three or four of our children in NanoLog, then you're right. They are economically the same value as a sending town, right? But like, in this case here, we're at plus 10. So, those plus 10 are just coming in at plus $4,200 per. So, no, but it's... Look, NanoLog, it was in the business plan all along, right, that recognizing that there's net savings because of expenses we don't need to incur, and on that list would include the bus. So, once we finish with NanoLog, the cost of that bus goes away, too. And that's a net savings to us year over year, for as long as we have the program. So...
Sorry, I forgot.
Yeah. Alan?
No, it's a good point. I would just say that, you know, if really push comes to shove, that we can defend this increase at the 1.7% level as being less than last year, and we're starting agri-science this year, so... And we're also... I don't know how much your average person knows about this. I'd imagine they would, that we're suffering the Teacher Retirement Board increase that is new. So, with those two major changes, to have a net... Well, here I go again. But a, I guess, a net budget of less than last year, a smaller increase than last year is a good thing, I think, as far as our trying to convince people that we're being fiscally prudent.
All right. So, we have a motion on the table. It's been to approve the budget as presented. It's been seconded. If there's no further comments or debate, I suggest we call a vote. All those in favor of passing the budget as presented for $22 million... Stop me if I get it wrong. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? All those abstained? I don't think we have any. All right. Motion passes. Budget's approved. Looking at the clock, and did we... I think we did actually pass that bylaw that said we were going to stop at the three-hour mark.
We can, by two-thirds vote, vote to extend the meeting.
We could vote to extend it, or we could just take the bylaws that were on the agenda, and we will postpone them to the following meeting.
There's like eight more items, Jen. Right. No, I do that.
Jen, you're making me... You're making me not...
Don't. Don't need not want to go.